Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 17th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of exits around the room in case of mishap and now join me as we re-pledge our allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's been quite some time since we've seen a lot of people in our seats. The first item on the agenda is an extension of approval for a site plan from River Ridge. This is the condominium complex located just to the north of us on Route 9 on the left. Make it a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
As a reminder to the audience and for everyone's edification, this site had an unfortunate bifurcation. We originally signed a site plan that did not include the clubhouse and recreational area, so when that was time to be built, it has a separate site plan. So, the public hearing tonight is only on an extension of approval of time in which the applicant has in which to complete construction. I drove by there myself and the pool looks pretty near ready to go, but I think there's a final finish on the bottom of the pool that needs to be done. This would allow the applicants to do this. In the interim, Ms. Moss, our zoning administrator, has worked with the applicants and their engineer over, excuse me, and our engineer, Mr. Sotero, on updating their SWIP, I believe, and their erosion sediment control permit, the ESC and the SWIP. So, we're moving along. We were originally considering only giving a three-month extension to sort of force that, but now we, now that that's set in motion, we're going to consider a year-long extension tonight. Any comments from the consultants? Anything from the board on this application? Would any member of the public like to speak about this application? If you would, just come up, state your name into the microphone and address. Thank you.
Susan Stiback. I just want to know, when you say you're giving them a year, giving us or a year to complete the pool and the sports court, so that the whole thing can be opened up?
Right. When the applicant made the building permit request, he or she, I'm not sure who it was, applied for a permit for the clubhouse, the pool, and the recreational and sports court?
Right.
All at the same time.
Right.
So, until all three are completed, his CO cannot be given.
Right.
Had that been handled separately, differently at the very beginning, a different building permit for each, then they could have CO'd each one separately.
Be changed? That can't be changed?
Not by this board. I'm not, the building department is a separate department from ours, so if the applicant worked with the building department, it might be possible to split up the three permits. But the way our code works, you have a year in which to start construction and two years in which to complete after receiving an approval. So, this project has now reached its second year since it was originally approved. As I understand it, there's just some small stuff that needs to be done, the final code. So, this gives them a year in which to do it, but I believe that they don't need a whole year from what I was told.
I don't think so.
So, but at any rate, it wouldn't be before our board to do this. We just approve a site. It would be the applicant's representatives working with the building department to see if they could revise the application.
I see.
Does that help?
Thank you. Yes, that does help.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Also, the site plan is not phased, so currently it all has to be done-
This is correct.
-before I can sign the certificate of occupancy.
That's right.
I heard you saying that, right?
Right.
You're saying that-
Well, the site plan, the site plan should have been phased as well. You would have had Phase 1 be the clubhouse, Phase 2, et cetera. So, it was approved, it was also approved as one big set. So, the best thing to get to be done if you're a resident over there would be to urge the project sponsors to finish the job.
We've been doing that for eight years.
I know. I've been up here all, I've been up here 10. I apologize on your behalf. Would anyone else like to speak about this application? There being none and no further comments, make it a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And who has this file?
That'd be me. Resolution to extend site plan approval of River Ridge at Hyde Park Recreation Center, formerly known as Maple Ridge. August 17th, resolution number 17-02N. Whereas on September 18th, 2013, by resolution number 57-02J, the planning board granted the applicant, River Ridge Associates LLC, amended site plan approval for the proposed recreation center at River Ridge Development Project located at 261 Hudson View Terrace Hyde Park, parcel 066-04-668241. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the town planning board hereby grants the applicant one-year extension of time to complete construction of the project as shown on the site plan approved by resolution number 57-02J and 2, and including September 30th, 2017, subject to the following conditions. One, payment all fees and escrow. Two, submission by September 21st, 2016, of an updated letter of credit or other performance guarantee to form substance and manner of execution acceptable to the town board and the town engineer, replacing prior road survey from Sterling National Bank, which expired on June 28th, 2016. Be it further resolved that before a certificate of occupancy may be issued for the proposed improvements on the approved site plan set, the applicant shall submit an approvable form of an easement and maintenance agreement between the applicant and the town for the parking spaces, sidewalk, and curbing located in the proposed town right away.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Just a quick note for the two newer members. A letter of credit or a performance bond, assurity of some sort is required for infrastructure improvements. So, the letter of credit expired, and what this means is, is that the letter of credit is put up so that we're the project sponsors to go bankrupt, belly up, just not leave, abandon the project. The town could use the letter of credit, the finances that are there, to complete the roads and other infrastructure improvements for the benefit of the residents there. So, it wouldn't remain, in other words, a half-built site. You wouldn't, it's not to build the housing or any of the residences, it's just for the infrastructure. So, the next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Hyde Park Town Center. On favor?
Aye.
I thought we did, sorry. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Hyde Park Town Center North. Applicants are seeking site plan approval to raise and rebuild an existing building located where what most people would collectively know as the old Malloy's Pharmacy. Other people call it the former Grand Union Plaza. I have a feeling that's why most people are out here tonight, is to discuss this application. Let me turn it over to the applicants first, who will walk the public through a presentation of what's proposed. We have them wireless.
On the microphone.
And, Mr. Sweet, before I let Ms. Leibert begin, the board has seen this, and we have copies of all the presentation, it's the audience that really hasn't seen it. Can you capture this on video if this is turned toward the audience?
Turned toward the audience.
Okay. Do you mind, Kelly? Thank you.
I can zero in extremely well.
Okay. I'm going to direct my comments to the board, but I'll, hopefully everyone can see this.
Thank you.
So, I'm Kelly Leibert with KRC, planning consultants here representing the applicant tonight. Also with me is Joe Berger, who is the engineer of record, in case there's questions relative to the engineering for the project, and Michael Boyce, who is the landscape architect for the project. I think everyone knows where this project is. I want to stand over here. Can you see it? Can you see it?
Yeah, I can see it.
All right. Everything goes this way. Is that okay that I face them?
That's fine.
Okay. I think everyone knows where this property is, and I grew up in Hyde Park, so this is something that's familiar to me. So, this is the former Grand Union Plaza as I know it. The parcel lines here are somewhat unique, as we've stated before. I can't really explain it, but the property is on the southeast corner of the intersection of Pine Woods Road and Main Street. It's set in the back. The two plazas in the front are not owned by the applicant. One of them is Alex Sarukas and the other is Ruth Malloy. There are two parcels-
It would just be Masuda.
Masuda, sorry. Two parcels that comprise the project area. So, there's a small property or small parcel in the front, and this is a quarter of an acre, and it just houses the existing seepage pits that have been on the site forever. The balance of the site is about 3.7 acres and contains four buildings. I'll just go through the buildings real quick on the property. So, the first building, that's the subject of this presentation. And just for everyone, this map is a little oriented to the side, so Route 9 is on the left, and then the property is on the right. The building number one is the former Malloy's Pharmacy, and that's 9,115 square feet. The second building, as I remember it, is the former Grand Union Building, and that building is 20, sorry, 23,000 square feet. The third building, the Grand Union Building, as everyone knows, is vacant. The third building is 4,300 square feet, and that houses the feed store. And the last building, the fourth building, is 5,400 square feet, and that's a vacant Access to the site is primarily through three different locations. So, one is a full turning movement onto Pine Woods Road, so left in, left out, right in, right out. There's also a full movement here, so a left in and a right in off of US Route 9. And then there's an undocumented entrance, which we've all talked about before, being that main cross street that brings you to the property to the south, McDonald's, Williams, CVS. And I say undocumented because we've discussed before, there really aren't reciprocal easements for anything on this property, so we've talked about that in the past. So, the project really is in the southern part of the site, focusing on the former Malloy's Pharmacy. And the applicant is proposing to remove that building and put up a 6,700 square foot building to house the Mavis facility. And it's nearly in the same footprint as the existing Malloy Pharmacy building. The difference, which is about 2,400 square feet, comes off of the south end of the building, and that's where we talked about the pocket park, the creation of the pocket park, which we'll talk about, I'll talk about later. We're not proposing any changes to the access to the site, so we're still keeping the Pine Woods Road entrance, the Route 9 entrance, and of course, the undocumented entrance to the south. I'll talk later about the connectivity to the property to the south. The site, as I mentioned before, is in the Hyde Park Town Center District. We've worked with the board on creating a project that meets all of the bulk requirements. It meets the guidelines for the town center standards, and this is a permitted use in that particular district. The parking is very unusual, we've talked about before, because one of the property lines actually goes through the parking lot. So, now, today, there are 182 parking spaces. The requirement, even though I know it's subject to the planning board, is 148 parking spaces, and we're proposing to keep 154. So, the reduction in the 182 existing to the 154 is in response to a lot of the information that we've received from the town and its consultants on scale and additional landscaping that the town had requested. So, there are the removal of some parking spaces primarily over by Pine Woods Road and creating some of those landscaped areas that you asked for. I don't think it's any surprise that everyone knows what the traffic is on US Route 9 in this particular area. It's about 19,800 cars, average trips a day. Mavis is indicating that they serve about 25 vehicles a day within their work hours. So, if you calculate that, it's about .12%, so not 12%, but .12% of the average daily trips on US Route 9. So, a de minimis increase, if any, if these are new trips coming to this area. We did propose signage on the project, and I think on our recent submission, we actually gave you elevations of those monument signs. So, again, within code, we'll remove the existing sign that's at US Route 9 entrance now. And we're proposing a 60-square-foot sign in that same area, similar monument sign to the property to the south, so we're trying to get a cohesive signage along Route 9. And also, and as of right, 40-square-foot monument sign over on Pine Woods Road. And in that area, we've provided some extensive landscaping for that, that sign. In response to the discussions that we've had with the planning board, we also did provide on the architectural elevations, some wall signage theme, and I'll go over that later. I think the board had indicated that we really need to be cognizant of future tenants as far as wall signage, so I'll go over that later, but there is a wall sign, two wall signs that would be proposed. As far as operations are concerned, there are approximately 12 full-time equivalent employees. The hours, I had gone through before, but I'll go over with everyone. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday is 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Thursday, 8:00 AM to 8:30 PM. Saturday, 8:00 to 5:00. And Sunday varies, but it's generally within that 8:00 to 5:00 timeframe. We did, at the request of the board, complete a noise study, which we did provide to you, and I'll just do a summary real quick for the public, so everyone can hear this. The town had requested that we look at five different receptors, or those are five different locations that you thought may be impacted by the potential noise. Receptor 1 and 2 were the same location, but just different areas, which is what everyone knows, the gray barn. So, we took readings from that area. And the ambient noise levels, which is just the existing noise averaged over the day, ranged from 48 to 52 decibels. And when you add the potential noise coming from the proposed project, the average 50 feet from the building was 64 decibels. Receptor 3, so I just did two together, receptor 3 was 14 Pine Woods Road. That's approximately 260 feet from the project area. The ambient readings range, this is pretty far away, 43 decibels and 46 decibels, so that's morning and night. And when you add the noise, the potential noise from the Mavis, the noise readings would be 56 decibels. Receptor 4 was 5 Cromwood Place, which is 425 feet from the proposed project. The morning and afternoon ranged from 53 to 59 decibels. When you add the Mavis proposed noise, it ranges from 46 to 50 decibels. Receptor 5 was 7 Cromwood Place, which is 520 feet from the proposed project. The ambient reading there was 48 decibels, and I'm just giving you the round number, I'm not giving you the tenths. This is 500 feet from the proposed project, and when you add the proposed noise from Mavis, it ranges from 44 to 48 decibels. And this is in the package that I just gave you a few weeks ago, so it's just a summary table in the back, just to give you one idea. Now, we can talk about noise later. The town does not have a standard for noise, meaning in your bulk requirement chart, you have standards for scale or standards for height. There isn't an actual noise level that the town says is annoying. So, annoying is very subjective. The company that did this noise study has done numerous noise studies for Mavis, and so what they did is they took a general noise reading of other communities, what other communities say is an annoying noise. And I use that term because that's what you use in your code, and that's 60 decibels. So, of all of the locations that I just read back to you, the one location, actually the two locations, which is receptor 1 and 2, which is the gray barn, which is right next to the project, those noise readings were, ranged from 58 to 64, just to give you an idea. And again, we just used this number because this is what was readily available to us.
Just for the record, while we don't have specific standards enumerated in our code, we do rely on DEC standards, and the 60 comports exactly with what DEC says-
Correct.
Where it becomes-
Yes.
Not just a nuisance, but you start having hearing loss if exposed to it all the time, et cetera.
Yes, and I think they referenced that was the DEC standard. As far as lighting is concerned, we did present it at the last meeting, but the applicant is proposing the identical lights that are located on the property to the south. It's not identical ownership of the property to the south, but we're trying to mimic those same light fixtures, which are those historic light fixtures that the town likes to see. And on the building are the historic gooseneck lights that match the pole lights that they were proposing, so same manufacturer. And we did provide you with a photometric plan. We are really trying to create a service facility here. And when I say that, I mean not just on this property, but on the property to the south, and hopefully, as the town sees other properties develop, there's some connectivity as you go further south. And so, what we've done is taken a lot of time to create a pedestrian connection between, really, Pine Woods Road and the sidewalk that brings you down Route 9 into the center, and then you can walk all the way down to Williams Lumber, between the sidewalks that are on the adjoining project and the new sidewalks that we're proposing on our project. So, what are we doing, you're probably asking? When you come in from Route 9, where the entrance is for the existing plaza, we're proposing new sidewalks from Route 9 into the building. And those sidewalks will also connect around the building, and then all the way south to the existing sidewalks that are the McDonald's, I'll call it the McDonald's Plaza. Behind the building, we're proposing lighting and landscaping, so when someone walks back there, you know, today it looks like a third-world nation, when they walk after this project, there'll be sidewalks, there'll be landscaping, and there'll be lighting, so someone would feel safe. In addition, people who are walking can also walk through the pocket park, which I'll talk about in a minute. And we've created a connection through the back, the south side of the property, to the sidewalk in the back of the building, and that'll take you again to the McDonald's Plaza. So, the point is, we listened to you, we heard what you said, we know that you wanted to see walkability here, and so this is the start of it for this plaza, so we're connecting it to the south plaza, and hopefully, you know, if we're able to do any other work on the site, we'll connect the rest of the site in. If someone were to come to this facility, I think it's a great place to go, because you can park your car and you can leave it, and then you can actually walk to the eye doctor or to CVS, McDonald's, to get some food. So, the idea is to create a location where people can park and just walk from both plazas back and forth. The landscaping, I'm going to leave to Michael, I'm going to let him go over that in a few minutes, and he can go over the pocket park and the actual plantings. But we did spend a lot of time with the board, hopefully the public got a chance to see that, but if you didn't, the applicant has spent a lot of time on creating what we call a pocket park. So, it's a very small green area, and in my opinion, when we do planning, you have to start somewhere, you have to start small and build on it. And even though this is a small park, it's a great green area, it's filled with, excuse me, benches and local plants and some wall fences to make you feel like you're by yourself but not unsafe. There's lighting in there, and there's a little walking path that will take you again over to the plaza to the south. So, it may be small, but we think it has a big punch, and we think it's going to be a great addition to this area. People are dropping off their cars, and they can perhaps go over and sit for a while where their cars are serviced and get, you know, a break from everything. The building. So, I wanted to bring our original elevation, so the public can see it, but hopefully you can all let them know that we've come great lengths on the new building that-
Very far.
So, the new building is beautiful, I think. It's a colonial-style building with a pitched roof. We're proposing to use, you know, rudely, it's called hardy, but it's cement-fiberous siding, so this is a non-vinyl siding. This is a clubboard siding with the cement material building. We listened to the board when you said, you know, clear glass and add stone and bring the stone around the back and take the front and replicate it in the back and on the sides. So, we listened to what you said, and we've added the stone all the way around the building, we've added stone on the columns, the glass is clear, the storefront windows over on the entrance are black mullions, so it's really of an age, you know, the era of the buildings that are in this area. We added the dormers on the top and at the entrance, so this would be the north side of the building, and on the east side of the building, we added that canopy, just to give it some break in the, in the elevation. Noted on this plan, too, is our proposed theme for the signage, so in case anyone didn't get to see it, so it's 10-inch raised letters, they're aluminum letters, color to be determined by the business, painted beadboard panel, so color to be determined by the business, and then wood trim around that sign. So, we think that that's a theme that we want to carry throughout the building. There was a suggestion or a comment or something about a second floor in this building, and I just want to make sure that everyone understands that there is not a second floor, meaning there is not usable space on the second floor. And I think a pitcher's worth a thousand words, and I'll probably get that to you for next meeting, but there's something shown on the plan that looks like steps, and it's actually, I'll call it a, like a ship ladder, up to a second-floor rack. So, there's racks that hold the tires, they go above the lifts for the car, and it's a ladder, if you want to call it, or a series of steps to get up where the tires are stored, and I'll provide you with a photo of that next time.
If it's used for storage, that would be usable space.
Not livable space, meaning they have an office.
Not livable space, but it would still be usable space.
Okay.
Is that why the building is so high?
No, it isn't, and we can talk about that. So, we did reduce the height of the building, and I'm, I would like to talk to you about that. I did speak to the architect. Everyone is willing to talk about the height of the building. We have no reservations about fixing this building and making it what you want. The, just as a baseline, the Grand Union Building is 26.7 feet, just so you get a sense, and we're at 44 feet, seven inches. So, I spoke to the architect and said, you know, what can I do? And maybe we'll have him come at the next meeting, or you can give me some feedback and we can show you some alternatives. The first thing that he said that we could do is to reduce about 24 inches above the doors, so we can bring the actual roof line down about two feet. Absent that, if he makes any changes, which he's happy to do, you know, so the board is happy and the applicant is still happy with the building, there will be some changes to the look of the building. So, the scale may change if the pitch of the roof changes. He just wanted to make sure everyone understood that. So, I'm hoping to get some feedback from you tonight of what you think about the 34 feet compared to the existing Grand Union, which is the 26.7 feet. Interestingly enough, I drove up here tonight and thought, how ironic is it that this building looks so much like the new Malloy's Pharmacy building where CVS is now? So, sort of the same color, same kind of architecture, probably the same scale of the building. So, with that, I'm going to turn this over to Michael Boyce and let him just touch on the landscaping. We did hear you last time. You asked for additional landscaping along that main entrance road, modification of some of the plants, and additional landscaping on the front of the property, meaning along Route 9. So, I'll let him go over that, and then we'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you.
You good?
Yeah. My name is Michael Boyce, I'm the owner of the Michael Boyce Collaboration. In addition to the proposed pocket garden that we spoke about last time, to the north of, well, wrong scale, to the north of the site, there are a series of islands in the parking lot that we proposed some plantings in. Yes, and these are, I think at this point, these are-
I'm sorry. These are from the latest plans from August 1st.
Yeah, so this is in addition to-
In the back.
All right. In addition to the plantings that we proposed last time. The plantings that we're proposing for these islands are both native, they're durable, semi-evergreen, evergreen, ground-cover type grasses and sedum. They're, they are grasses that can handle the salt load that we might see in winter, the snow load, the heat, the heat island effect, and drought. So, it's a, it's a planting that, once established, will not require a lot of additional help from, from irrigation or, or man. In addition to that, we've incorporated a planting at the entry along Route 9, which includes two varieties of native grass and golden rain trees, which is, although not native, is a beautiful, a beautiful tree, long yellow panicle flowers. If you head down Route 9 in Wobbling Falls, you'll see a, the entire stretch of Route 9 is plantable, and through Wobbling Falls. And, and back to the pocket garden, for the benefit of the public. The pocket garden is actually conceived of a series of interlocking seat walls, and the idea behind this garden is to create areas of, of privacy and also social collaboration. We've incorporated living walls in this pocket garden, mast perennials, small-scale trees, and the idea behind this pocket garden is to, you know, sort of create a biophilic relationship with the people that use it. relationship with the people that use it. And that basically, that word basically describes how we feel when we're in a space that is full of plants, green life, that kind of thing. So and again, as Kelly mentioned before, it's a park that might be used by the folks that are having their car serviced at Mavis, it may be used by other folks in any of the adjoining buildings, McDonald's, whatever, people passing by in the neighborhood who may want to just sit down in the park, have a cup of coffee, read a book, and that's part of what this is about. But it's the nucleus of this sort of idea, and hopefully this expands, but this is, you know, where we're starting.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to kind of recap with some of the town center standards. I had talked before about how we've tried to make this site, and I think we achieved it, meet all of the bulk requirements in the town. Consultants have been fantastic in the town, Planning Board has been fantastic in working with us and helping us get there. Again, this is a permitted use, but I also pulled out, just so I had it, in front of me was the Town Center Historic Standards, and I just wanted to go through those real quick. The first one was establishing a mixed-use development that is the preferred form of the use. And I think we've done that, I think we've achieved that, and we're really trying to make a cohesive site with the property to the south. Again, even though it's different ownership, we're really trying to let the public think that that's one property. Developing public parks, commons, or small pedestrian plazas with amenities such as benches, landscaping shall be encouraged, and I think Michael has done a fantastic job on creating that. And we hope, again, to continue this through the balance of the site, you know, as we look to the future. The third one is the adaptive reuse of historic structures is encouraged, and I think we actually did the opposite. So we're going to remove an older, dilapidated, flat-roofed building and put up, in theory, a historic structure, a historic-looking structure. So we're doing the opposite, but I think certainly achieving the same goal. The number of off-street parking spaces required shall be the minimum necessary. We've talked to you about that before, we've reduced a lot of the parking, and we'll continue to work with you as we move through the site. Service alleys for deliveries and utility access shall be established along rear property lines. Kind of a unique property, there really isn't an alley in the back, but we have talked about delivery vehicles, and Mavis generally has box trucks that come and deliver vehicles, mostly daily, so those will get dropped off. We have shown you on the plans where they could put a tractor-trailer onto the site if they needed to, and we have worked with the fire department to make sure that they have full access in and out of the site, and hopefully you have the letter from the fire department. On-street parking is encouraged, which really isn't applicable here, because there isn't. The primary means of access to the lots in the town center shall be via the existing street corridors, and so we're certainly achieving that, and we're also really enhancing that third-world connector road that brings you to the back of the other plaza. So we're helping foster that connectivity between the plazas. And lastly, as newer infill buildings shall be located as close to the front setback line as possible and in line with existing buildings, so to maintain the integrity of the existing building setbacks. So we're putting this building, as I indicated before, nearly smack dab on the location of the existing building. So that's the Town Center Standards, I just wanted to go over that with you real quick. We're all here, so we're happy to answer any questions that the board or the public has.
Thank you. What I'm going to do, because it appears we have a lot of people here tonight to speak, maybe no one will speak, maybe we're just here to listen, but what I'd first like to do is open it up for public comment. So if you guys don't mind vacating the table for a moment, is there, was there a sign-up sheet, was it collected? Bob, is there anybody, is there anybody written on there? You're not required to sign up, you can just come up by yourself, I was just going to call, I was going to call those first. Again, you're free to comment, just because we have a lot of people here this evening. If you've already heard, you've already heard what you want to say, stated, you could just stand up and say, I agree with what's been stated before, you don't have to reiterate it over and over again. I promise every comment that we receive will be taken very seriously. The first person to sign up was Valerie Lozey, located at 32 Howard Boulevard Extension. Come on up. Did I not open the public hearing?
All right, which one am I talking into?
The board, sorry.
Okay. Valerie Lozey, 32 Howard Boulevard Extension. I'm speaking for myself as a small business owner. My husband and I run In the Woods Bed and Breakfast. First off, I'm just disappointed that we're even considering a business that isn't tourist-based close to the town center. That I need to say, for me, the innkeeper. The observation my husband has is, after 30-plus years in the automotive car industry, he cannot see how, less than a mile away, putting another tire store. In the future, he knows one will go belly up, and then we'll end up with another business storefront empty that is only for a very specific tenant. Sounds lovely what they want to do, it just isn't practical so close at hand. It jeopardizes one of the businesses down the road, and I can't see that for our future that we want to do or approve that type of thing. That's it.
Thank you very much. The next person is Susan Spivak, who spoke earlier, living at River Ridge. I think she's not here, she may have thought she was signing up for the last public hearing, you're right. Anne Rose Brelford of River Ridge, no? Richard Kiralt of River Ridge, okay. Jack Dwarack, Curry Lane. Welcome, Mr. Dwarack.
Jack, excuse me, Jack Dwarack, 16, Curry Lane, Hyde Park. The application the board has in front of it right now really represents a light industrial development. They say it has some retail aspects, is a space-saving description. This is not the type of operation that would be conducive to attracting other retail activity on the other portions of this parcel, or even in the immediate vicinity. As proposed, the new structure has the same footprint as the Malloy Pharmacy. However, as we've just heard, the proposed structure is twice the height of the existing Malloy's. So as you go down the street, you can get an idea how massive this particular structure that's planned would be. The height would be overwhelming to the surrounding area. Excuse me. The service bays on the west side of the proposed structure are clearly visible from Route 9. They will also dominate the vista from Route 9 that this property has. Size and use of the proposed building would result in negative effects on the potential marketability of other adjoining lands and other vacant portions of the same parcel. Any efforts to modify the visual impact of such a large structure by addressing lighting systems, landscaping, architectural details, et cetera, would not overcome the misplacement of such a large improvement or enterprise in this area of the town. For these and other reasons, if this project goes forward, it represents very little, if any, benefit to the town. In fact, negative effects are easy to imagine. As the old adage goes, no matter how much lipstick you put on a pig, it's still a pig. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dwarack. The next individual to sign up to speak is James Whitman from Cromwell Place.
Thank you very much. James Whitman, live on Cromwell Place, which is the street directly across from the proposed site. Actually, testing was done there. I speak on my behalf, as well as my wives, my wife, not wives. I'd like to begin by thanking the Planning Board for their hard work and service to our community. In reviewing this proposal, we have gained a new appreciation for the detailed nature of town development. We'd also like to thank N&amp;N HP LLC for investing in our community. We're anxious to see Hyde Park Shopping Center filled with shops and services that we can support with our patronage. We consider this area at the heart of our historic community to be a key to its return to a small-town feel. We fear that placing an automotive business at the front and center of this plaza will not facilitate that goal and may further impede other suitable businesses from this location. Ideally, a location for Mavis outside of our historic district would be preferable, but we understand that this doesn't actually help the bottom line for the developer. Another location within the plaza itself might be considered, perhaps a northeastern corner along Pine Woods Road with the bays facing south. In this location, any significant noise could be buffered by a creative use of evergreens and landscaping within a parking area. As residents of Cromwell Place, noise is by far our most pressing concern for this project. We've reviewed the sound study and questioned why the measurements on Cromwell Place were not taken in the evening, even though most Mavis shops have evening hours at least once a week, as was mentioned, until 8:30 p.m. Also, two out of the three Mavis sites tested were done in the winter with the bay doors closed. Not exactly a fair representation of the typical noise level that will be generated. We believe that the noise created from this business will hinder our enjoyment of our home, our yard, and degrade its value. The rendering of the proposed building is architecturally attractive, granted, but its scale is massive for the location. We urge both the Planning Board and Zoning Board to restrict its length and height. Hyde Park has been making steady progress toward its goal of a safe, pedestrian-friendly town center by adding several sidewalks. We would like to see a sidewalk along Pine Woods Road added to this proposal if it goes through. This would enable safer travel for pedestrians traveling along this heavily-commuted road, as well as for those exiting Pine Woods Park. Lastly, although there are several lovely specimens included in the landscaping plan, there's a lack of evergreens that would provide enjoyment through the winter months. Also, the amount of planned landscaping, although an improvement, should be even more significant to balance the expanse of hardscaping that this center features. That's all I have. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you very much for those very eloquent remarks, and also for taking the time to come in and look at the plans thoroughly, I can see you did. Before I call the next person, I just want to add that some of what you stated has also been requested by the Planning Board, particularly the sidewalk along Pine Woods, and you heard that there's already been a discussion about the scale being very large and maybe overwhelming the area. So the next person to sign up is Tim Kane of Beadart Place.
Good evening, I'm Tim Kane, I live on Beadart Place. I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk and address some of my concerns. Primarily, these deal with the size, the scale of the building, and its placement within the site. The height of the building is a particular concern, almost towering over the other buildings in the area and in our town center. The square footage is also a concern, significantly extending the space taken up by the former Malloy's Pharmacy. The noise has been cited as a concern, and I want to echo some of those concerns that were made, but also mention that as we try to develop the rest of this site, the noise generated by this initial business could make it more difficult to attract more tourism-related businesses, restaurants, shops, and drown out the other possibilities for business there. Finally, last comment I'd like to make, this ties back a little bit to some of the comments in the prior public hearing about the lack of the overall site plan. It seems that we're going ahead with just one element of the development of the full site without a full-site plan, and may cut off further opportunities for development based on the choices made with this first proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. The next speaker is Valerie Valente of Sherwood Place. I hope I said your name correctly.
You did.
Thank you.
Valerie Valente, One Sherwood Place, that's also the location of The Journey Inn Bed and Breakfast. I'm the owner of The Journey Inn, and that's also my home. I just want to state that tourism in the Hudson Valley is booming, and it's really, there's no sign that it's not going to get, it's going to get worse, it's going to get better, it's going to get much better. Hyde Park is blessed with some of the really most popular destinations in the Hudson Valley, FDR Home, Vanderbilt, the Culinary Institute. Unfortunately, the town itself is not benefiting from this tourism revenue at all. I mean, we do very well in terms of getting our guests here, but the one thing that we hear over and over and over again is really quite the disappointment that the town is not a pedestrian town, it's not a town where people can walk easily to restaurants, can walk to shops, can mill about, can sit in town. Honestly, it's a real shock to the guests that come to the inn. So unfortunately, we do not get our fair share of tourism business in our town, because the town itself, as of now, doesn't have enough really tourism-related spots. I'm all for development, believe me, I'm a capitalist at heart. And let me tell you something, I think it's great to bring business into this town in any way, shape, or form. I just think this particular location really needs to be a place, not only for the community, but also for the booming tourist industry that quite frankly Hyde Park is missing out on. Places like Rhinebeck and Millbrook, and towns that, quite frankly, I have to say were dumps just a few years ago, like Beacon, are booming with tourism. We should be getting that revenue. This town is fabulous. It's historic, and I'll tell you, tourists expect it to be that way. I think this is a very bad light industry, I heard somebody say, which I thought was a really great way to say it, this is not what should be in the center of this town in our historic district. We really need to think about what kind of services we want there. And even if this place, and believe me, I thought the plans were beautiful, even if this is as nice as it can be, it is going to limit what else can go in that area. Thank you.
And the last to sign up is John Shalepi of River Road.
John Shalepi, One River Road. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our concerns. I want to be, and I am pro-business, but paradoxically, I believe that this particular business is going to reduce growth. And of all the things mentioned, I think the noise is the most significant. You've mentioned that, or the presenter mentioned that the noise, when you look at the residential area, is borderline, but within the range. But yet, if we want to grow businesses in the area that is adjacent to this proposed site, just who of us would like to have a cup of coffee where there's noise that's actually hurting our hearing? That seems to be the most significant place if you wanted to invite other businesses to come in. And there might be some ways. I think Tim Kane mentioned that, I think it was he who mentioned, if you moved the positioning of the bays so that they did not face Route 9, and put up evergreens and whatnot, that that might reduce the noise to an acceptable level, so that adjacent parcels of land could actually support tourist business and people who would be walking through. Most of us try to avoid places that are so loud and so noisy that it prevents conversation and actually could damage hearing. So I wanted to express that concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak about this application?
Yes.
Greetings, this is the former vice chair of the Planning Board, it's the person whose seat I occupied when I first joined.
And you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Okay, so first of all, I hope you continue the public hearing, because, oh, I'm sorry, Sharon Perrino Buco, 42 Fuller Lane. I hope that the Planning Board continues the public hearing, because unfortunately, I did not review the plans in totality. However, I glanced at things very quickly, and I did note motions and what was presented and the thoroughness, that the Planning Board has worked with the applicant, and I appreciate that. One of the concerns that I'm a little disappointed in is the build-out of this site. I find it hard to follow, and only because I have read these plans, reviewed plans, and build-out plans before, was I able to delineate- and build-out plans before was I able to delineate some of the parcels to this chopped-up parcel of property. So I am disappointed in that the Planning Board and even some of the people on it have not pursued this with the adjacent property owners, and even if you need to take it to the Town Board to pursue. This property has been an eyesore and a controversial subject in this town for over 35 years, and it's covered with impervious material. However, so my big question that I haven't reviewed is how large is the parcel that the building is being proposed to be built on? I saw how, you know, we pointed to several things, and I will take that as a to-do for myself to review it. Again, I already said that I think it's your duty to pursue this as a build-out.
It's not a single parcel.
I know, but I don't know where that parcel is.
Just for the building, the parcel, it's hard to see up there, but basically, the area just to the north, or if you're entering from Route 9, the left, that was created by a judge. Did not go through the Planning Board, could be subdivided, so there's a little subdivided lot that the applicant's own now. Ms. Leibert's pointing to it. Then she can outline the rest of the site to you. Basically, there's a line that goes from there that goes around Mr. Serukus' building, where Two Taste used to be.
Yep.
And then it goes up, right, then back behind the three existing buildings there. Then it angles down, and includes the former Malloy Pharmacy. She heads south, close to what she called the gray building, where there's residents above it and an all-state there, right? Now then it goes back behind the little building that is now owned by Mrs. Masuda. The Malloy's and the Masuda's, as co-property owners, were engaged in a lawsuit that was lengthy, and as part of the settlement, the judge, in his or her wisdom, or lack thereof in my point, created two parcels, and Ms. Masuda's parcel has no access to stormwater, sewer, water, or parking entry. So there's a bit of a dispute there. A driveway, there's no way to actually, it's landlocked, in other words. And the other parcel that was created, like I said, the current owners bought that, so we're looking at two parcels for this overall site. But the building is part of the broader lot that contains the other three buildings, too.
Okay, that helps. So I hope that that can be pushed to become one parcel, perhaps. And in addition to that, I'm still going with the build-out of the entire site, which brings me to the height of the proposed building is hideous for this site. I do think that the applicant and the Planning Board did an excellent job in negotiating the view of the building, the materials of the building. I think, you know, I actually think this could work on a smaller scale, and I, you know, don't say that this is the best use of this property, but I think, again, we want to look at a build-out of it so that it is a site that is of use for this property. And I'm just going to say, build-out plan, build-out plan, build-out plan. And this is the heart of the town, and my only other comment is the sidewalks. I made my first and last trip on our wonderful sidewalks on Route 9, and unless those sidewalks are moved in off Route 9 or the speed limit comes down, I will never walk on Route 9 again. That's it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Ms. Sweet, do you want to come up and speak? This is our media committee, I guess it's running on by itself downstairs.
For the moment. Barbara Sweet, 6 Covey Road, Hyde Park. If you must put the building exactly in that position, think about bringing it toward the street, Route 9, and turning the building 180 degrees so that the bays will face the east side and what will be along, and there will be parking area for trucks, et cetera, in the back, okay, with the building moved forward. Everything I see here is on paper, so changes can be made. If it has to be there, exactly, just move it forward along Route 9 and put the bays in the back. If you have to, if you could, the best thing to do is put it way to the north and/or do not put it in at all. Period. One, two, three, goodbye.
If I could summarize that real quickly, you were suggesting moving the, our code in this district requires that buildings be moved as close to the front of the building line as possible with all parking to the rear. So you're talking about shifting the building west to be closer to Mrs. Masuda's building and then have bays facing the opposite direction and/or move it along to Pine Woods, which in the north, along Pine Woods, the north section, which we've heard already from other audience members. Anyone else like to speak tonight? Yes, come on up.
Bill Vlook, 37 South Drive. Yesterday, I was out playing golf over in Montgomery, playing terrible, but anyhow, I played. And I did, and I'm sorry I didn't take a picture of it, but there was a Mavis tire shop out in Gardner, and I was amazed at how lovely it looked. So I'm, excuse me, I don't know if I'm going out there again.
We can find that on Google Docs, or in Google Picks, Google Search. We can find that.
And I'm sure it was a Mavis, and I turned my head quickly, and I thought if I had had a camera, I didn't have a camera with me, but it might be worthwhile looking at. I don't, I personally do not want a tire place on that piece of property, and I don't think it belongs in the middle of, in quotes, the historic Hyde Park. But if it's going to go there, then take a look at this place. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? I think what I'll do is, did you take copious notes, I hope? Okay. I can type up mine and then send them to you as well. Just before I go on to the board to hear comments, it was instructive to hear the audience speak. I really appreciate everyone coming out, and I really appreciate the well-thought-out comments. Sometimes we don't get people who are so erudite, I assure you. The other thing I want to just point out, because it's been alluded to, in our code in this district, commercial, common, general is an allowed use. So what that means is, is that I don't believe that, you could, Mr. Dorick called it light industrial use. That doesn't really meet the definition in our code of light industrial. This would be just general commercial use, so that's why it's allowed. Ms. Leibert made note that it meets all the bulk requirements. That isn't quite accurate yet, as far as I can see. Ms. Leibert, I had, I couldn't get your numbers on scale. I couldn't, when I was trying to calculate all the buildings, all the parking areas, I couldn't get your numbers to meet what my numbers were. I couldn't get, when I count the number of parking spaces on the existing site plan, I count 175, you show, I think, 180. I see a reduction of 19, all the ones in front of the existing Malloy's, and then there's a reduction of, where there's 12, I think there's 11 now shown between the five that are along 9, et cetera, and then you reduce some over in the 25-acre parcel. In addition, I believe there's a mezzanine in the former Grand Union, and that's a space, all floors count towards scale under our code, so that should be added. I don't know, I don't remember exactly if the second floor, if it's used as part of the, if Mavis, if it's used for storage, if that's considered part of scale, but I would think it would be because it's part of the use. So that would add more to the scale. So I had Ms. Axelson do a calculation of scale, and we got, my numbers tied more or less with hers. Mine were slightly off, but she calculated that the existing scale is 73,195.7 square feet, and that what you're proposing, without adding a second floor on Mavis of 6708, it comes up to 67,6111. So it means that you exceed scale currently, and even though you're reducing it, you would still exceed scale afterwards. But I think if we add the second floor of Mavis, you're going to actually be a little bit higher, so it would still be an expansion of existing scale. Again, I'm going to email this to you.
Yeah, we'll get it and compare numbers.
And one thing that made a difference, too, is that when we approved Stop &amp; Shop, the loading dock was counted as part of the scale because it's part of the use, it's enclosed by a roof and has a wall. So that was included, and then there's a connector between Buildings 2 and 3 that wasn't included, it's 55, 55 feet by 12 feet. It says roof collapsed, but that would still be considered part of the structure, I believe, unless there's absolutely no roof over it. Otherwise, when Liz did this, Ms. Axelson performed this, she was looking at the plans that submitted using an engineer's scale to calculate, so we just need to resolve that, mainly because it really affects whether this needs to proceed with a special use permit or not. I was at first going with your numbers, which show that it's above scale, but you're going to reduce it below. So if you're going to be increasing or keeping it even above 65,000, that needs to be addressed by a special use permit.
Our goal is to keep it at 65, so we'll work with you on your numbers.
And I apologize to the audience, because that's very dry and arcane bits of information that I just gave you, but it's actually critical to the path that the applicant would need to move forward, because it depends if a special use permit is required or not. Now, what I normally do is start with the consultants, but tonight I'm going to actually start with the Planning Board, because now that they've heard from the public, I want to get into the record what everyone else, my colleagues, have to say. So let me start with Ms. Dexter, one of the vice chairs. Is that okay if I call on you first?
Sure. I did want to thank all the public comments because, again, they hit on such wonderful code-related points, so thank you very much. This project, I want to thank Nick and Nick for, first of all, buying the plaza and also for finding, you know, hopefully your first customer. But I do have a lot of concerns as far as this project goes, and there's a million places where I could start, but I did want to just, you ended by talking about the town center historic district standards, and you went through A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H. And where I disagree is on Point B that talks about developing public parks, commons, or small pedestrian plazas. The pocket park, yes, it is a good place to start, but, you know, I'm hoping, I was hoping for something that would kind of make us all go, ooh. One of the places where you would find something that would make you go, ooh, is a piece of the code, Section 8, Section 108, point, there it is, Section 108 dash 1.7, that talks about the corridor management plan. That was a group of individuals back in the early 2000s, I don't know, 20-some people, studied that entire area. One of the, one of the places in the documents refers you to another document called, I think it's just called the Albany Post Road Corridor, and it's specifically this plaza, and it talks all about the issues, and it talks about the accesses on Pine Woods and Route 9. None of that has really changed over the years. I mean, that was actually cited in the Greenway Guidelines when they did that reorientation and made a service road, they kind of went through it. But it still didn't address, there's still major issues, and this corridor study was really well put together, has some gorgeous things in it, but it has a town common in it that made me go, wow. And I'd love to see something like that. First of all, what it draws your eyes to is not asphalt, but right smack in the front there, beautiful sea of green. It can be, I mean, with your landscape architect, he could have a heyday. It would be great.
Is there another spot in the town that they've done this? For example, Stop &amp; Shop, I know just went through some development, and Dunkin' Donuts, there were some other properties that have done development. Is there somewhere that I can go look at and see what you're looking for, other than on the plan where someone actually implemented it?
This is the study for this site, so I would recommend that you go and look at that particular study, because, again, they did renderings, they had some wonderful people who did some really nice work.
Do I just, I want to add real quickly that for Stop &amp; Shop or Hyde Park Mall, the two green areas that are in the front, where there's now a sidewalk and pedestrian scale lighting, were considered the common areas. We didn't ask them to add a lot of benches, et cetera, because they have a judo, I'm sorry, taekwondo or, one of those, thank you, martial arts, there, I couldn't think of it. They have a martial arts store there, and on nice weather, the martial arts, they teach outside in that area, so we didn't want, they said that's what they would use it for, so we didn't want to clutter it up. Otherwise, there's been no, I can't think of any other site because we don't have any other big shopping centers, except yours and this one and the other one that's to the south of this. We had considered pushing, but your sewer area, your septic area is where the common area would ideally go, or a front building along 9. I know that the sewer is all along the front, to the left of that entrance as well, so that's why I think we didn't push that, so.
It is a unique site. I'll look at the study and see what it says, but, you know, because the parking, you know, I think a lot of times people look at the site the way that it exists today, notwithstanding the property line that goes through the center of that parking lot, and you think you have a more balanced square palette to work with, and unfortunately, that line goes right through the center of the property, and most of those parking spaces are Serukus. So we're somewhat constrained as far as area that we can work with, but I'll look at it and see, see what it says.
I understand. And, you know, just, we have talked about this, and just in my mind, it seems like it would be easier to, if you needed to do any work, to dig up grass than to have to dig up pavement and try to put that back down again. I mean...
Well, we don't necessarily want to rip up all the pavement that's there. Is that, that's what you're saying, is rip up that?
Yeah, I think, but I thought that was in your plan that showed that that was part of the area that was...
Oh, okay, sorry. I'm glad I asked the question. So there is an area where we, I think the zoning enforcement officer had asked about the repair of that area. I keep calling it the Third World Nation because that's what it looks like, and there's potholes and broken curbs and so forth. So there is some areas that we're planning on removing pavement or milling and then repaving and restriping just so that it looks better, and that's, that may be what you're referring to. So that strip that brings you from the plaza to the south out to Pine Woods Road, we're planning on improving in addition to the landscaping, and the area in front of the project area, we're proposing to remove some of that asphalt and improve it because it's not safe to walk on at the moment.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Are you referring to the .25 acre area?
Yes, the .25 acre area.
The other area?
Yes.
And the plan, you know, that Michael has prepared, we have a table on there, but just so everyone is aware, there's over 2,000 plants that he's proposing on this site. So it is, it may be because the map is so small and we haven't really focused on the plants, but there's extensive landscaping. One of the things that we wanted to make a point of is that we did have a meeting with the town regarding some of the work that you're doing on Route 9, south of the site, that there was some grant money, and in the future, you're going to be doing some landscaping there. So we're listening to what you're saying, and we're trying to react and give you everything that you've asked for. We redid our landscaping plan so that that area in the front will match the plants. We have that plan that's proposed, although I don't know if it's approved or not yet, but we're matching the plants that you would put in south of our project so that as people drive up Route 9, it's the same light fixtures, it's the same signage, it's the same landscaping. And that's what we're trying to do, is fill in those areas.
I like that. I like how you're trying to knit everything together so it looks cohesive and go out.
And that's where we think, you know, we know that there's more to the site, there's certainly more to Hyde Park. We really wanted to focus, we've said this over and over again, and we've been pretty adamant that we wanted to focus on this building and this project area, and, you know, it will come. We've done this before with you guys, we've done some great projects here.
Correct. I understand. So I just want to try to get through my points. The other, the other one that I disagree with is H, that talks about the new, our infill building shall be located as close to the front setback line as possible. One of the commenters already said that the building, you're going to raise it anyway, and it is massive. That's one of my other issues, is the scale of the building. But our code does say, if you're going to do that, you need to bring it up so that it's in line with the other buildings. You can shift it around so that you can put the long end along the entranceway, but there should be an attempt to try to meet our code that says to bring that up to the front, says to the front setback.
Well, our two options are, you know, someone had mentioned rotating the building 180 degrees and facing the bays to the back, and, you know, that's not a viable option as far as we're concerned. So then you have the use, which we're entitled to, you know, it's a commercial use, so we're entitled to have a building facing Route 9.
And that's fine. I understand that.
And so the other one was to orient it.
I understand that, but I'm just saying that our code has this, and when I read through all the comments, I don't actually see a rationale as to why you're just going to leave it right where it is.
Well, so the other option is to, I think that someone had discussed, was rotating it... it 90 degrees.
Yep.
But the area simply isn't there. If you can see, we don't have that space. And that's why I really keep saying to everyone that this is a unique lot. If we had a square, great, we could do that. But we don't have the property area to, to orient the building 90 degrees. We physically don't have it.
Well, with the current building?
Correct. That, that's the tenants, I mean, the tenant is allowed to have their space, you know, they have a corporate size that they have for these buildings. And so for us to come back and say that we're going to reduce the size of the building...
Sorry, the tenant is not allowed to dictate what goes on in this town.
Not allowed to you. They're allowed to themselves. So if they want to have...
We have pictures of other Mavis's all around. I can think of the one right now in Reinbeck that doesn't have eight bays. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to speak against this project. It's just, if you're going to, you use the term, you're adamant that you're only doing this one section. As I pointed out since the very first meeting in March, you do not have enough landscaping. You need, you need 15% of total square footage of all stalls and aisles. Just counting your 154 spaces, that's 25,000 square feet you're supposed to have, and I said it at the very first meeting. Back then, I used a rougher calculation, because you didn't have the 154. Now, it's 3,750 square feet of landscaping is required on this site. Now, what I believe Ann suggested was that you look at the 25-acre parcel, .25 acre parcel, as well as the area just to the east of that, before you get to the north-south roadway, as looking at an area to perhaps provide that required amount of landscaping, or tell us why, that there has to be justification as to why we're not, we relax this standard. And it says very clearly that parking is not supposed to dominate any site when viewed from the street. I look at this, and it's still dominated by parking. I appreciate what Mr. Boyce did, but he basically added landscaping into the few beds that already exist. There's no attempt to create a bigger public common. And while I shouldn't be speaking until the end, because that's what I was going to do, but I also want to point out that the pocket garden that's referred to as a common space is going to have decibel levels of above 60. The receptor that's used is the gray building. The pocket garden's even closer to the building than that gray building, the, the proposed building. So I'm wondering who's going to sit there, if they're going to be having 60 degrees, 60 decibels and higher, while they're trying to use the space. And again, I'm not trying to talk against it, it's just this adamant idea that, or this idea that you're going to be adamant and not respond further to the planning board, because you've done a great job so far on the building, but there are other sections of the code that you're asking us to relax substantially. And I don't see a reason, as Ann said, my own opinion, that you're going to be tearing up that asphalt, why you wouldn't go ahead and say, "Well, we don't need all this parking," at the time, because you have three or two additional empty buildings, and one, a feed store, that's got its own kind of assigned parking there. So it's, again, it's just a request for you to consider and take a look at it, because you're tearing up that parking area already as it is.
We heard, and so perhaps we misunderstood what you had said at the last meeting, that you wanted additional landscaping on that connector road, that you wanted that landscaped on both sides. And that, that's what we did.
I suggested that is one area. No, no, I suggested that is one area, but that one area does not equal 37, 3,075 square feet of landscaping.
We'll, we'll look at the numbers and then see where we're...
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ann.
That's quite all right. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the building. Our code also requires that, it's called large building design, it's, I have to do the section. 108, 4.5G, 1E? E, that's it. Yes. Thank you. Ding, ding, ding. It says, "Large building design, where the building has a facade longer than 100 feet, shall present the appearance of a grouping of two or more small, well-proportioned buildings incorporating L's, wings, verandas, porticoes, courtyards, and similar elements as unifying features." I think your building is 130 feet long, which is part of, which is part of the reason why people are kind of saying, "Wow, it sounds like it's huge." Our code addresses that and says, when you're going to be huge, you got to make it look like it's a couple of smaller buildings. There's a number of ways to do that. There's also the easy way, which is to reduce the scale of the building. Make it less than 100 feet, reduce the number of bays. Maybe now is a time. I went out online and I did look, and I found other Mavis locations just within our own backyard. And it's really interesting. It looks like Mavis has a lot of leeway, that they're very flexible. So I'm going to pass these out so that my colleagues...
Well, I would agree with you that there's some leeway, and I think that we've had this discussion with you from the beginning, from the original building that we were proposing to this building, and we think we've done...
So let me, let me, let me just talk first. I'm not actually looking for feedback on everything that I say. Okay. There's one in Cold Spring, New York, that doesn't even look like it has any bays. It faces the road, and it just looks like a storefront. And it's like, okay, it's got the little yellow and green balloons, and I can't quite even figure out where the bays are. There's one in Beacon, New York, which is really cool looking. It's, it's all brick. It has two entrances. Does it kind of like a car dealership? One in, all the bays are inside, and then one out. That's a, that's a potential way. That would help with all the sound. If you don't have all the bays, they're not going to be open. The sound is all inside. So that's, that's one of the ones that they did. Hopewell Junction has a beautiful one with four bays. Looks kind of like a barn. It's very attractive, very nice landscaping. None of these, by the way, look like they're actually in shopping centers. They're, they look like they're separated. And then the other one that I just put out was right along Route 55 in La Grange, right before you get to the Apple Valley Shopping Center, is another Mavis. Also, it only has four bays. So I can see that there are many, many, many instances where Mavis has cut down the scale, and looks like they're being very successful. I have pictures here for the consultants, if you want, has that down. And I have a set here, if you'd like. There you go. All right. That should cover my scale issues. The other points I wanted to bring about is that our code also requires that you look at sidewalks throughout the site. You have to connect from the street to all the points onto the lot. You have to also connect all of the buildings within the lot. My, my overriding, we keep talking about Mavis and this, and this big derelict lot, but there's a tenant that's been in there for 20 years, Feeds Plus. I don't know how the heck that, that guy has managed to survive. He's a, I mean, he's, he runs a great business. I love going in there. But we never talk about him, and I feel like he's the little redheaded stepchild sitting off there. He's been holding that site down for 20-plus years. I'd like to see his building. I'd like to see the entire site get a facelift. You are not the first ones to come in here and tell us that you can only do this one section of the site, of the shopping center. Every other shopping center that's come in and told us that, and we've told them, "No, we need to see site-wide improvements," guess what? Every single one of them has sold out. They are at max capacity, or close to max capacity. They are successful and thriving, because you know what they did, is they made the improvements, they made the investment. It's like the Field of Dreams. If you build it, they will come. Okay? I need to see some attempt that we're not just going to be looking at one building, and then everything else continues to look like crap. Okay? There's that. And then, of course, the sidewalks along Pine Wood Road. That, for me, is a must-have. And then, you know, you deal with how you want with Mavis. In my opinion, it needs to be about half the size of what you're proposing. It can't be 10 feet higher than the building behind it, which is already a huge building. I don't understand it. I'm looking at all these other Mavis's. They're not that tall. If you have other uses, we need to kind of know what that's going to be. If it's all tire storage, I guess if it's eight bays, you do need a huge building. So, but I do like the idea of moving it over to Pine Woods and facing it south and buffering it. It's easy in, easy out. But my other comment, too, has to do with Pine Woods, and that's the ingress egress there. That is really dangerous. You show the truck turning radii, but even with your programs, it looks like the trucks have to go over into the south, or the westbound lane to cut in, and then it looks like they're running up on top of the sidewalk or the plantings there. So I think that area needs to be improved. I think it's unsafe. I can't believe it's 30 feet wide, because sometimes you have a little teeny car in there, and it still feels like you can't barely get in there. I want to see improvements there. That whole intersection is unsafe. You have, you have all these contact points. So I need to see something there. Oh, thank you. Are we back? Yes, we are.
I think I'm going to cut them out.
Oh, okay.
The regular lights, the regular lights are not on.
Right, right, with the green light. There's a lot more that I wanted to comment, but to be honest, those are the really, the big points. It's the scale of the building, and it's adhering to the code. I know you just want to do that one section of the plaza, but I really need to see something that shows that the whole site is going to be addressed. You can do that through a phasing plan. That would be fine, because you can always come in and amend that. But we want to see something that, that addresses the whole site. And I'll let my colleagues go.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Again, I want to thank the applicants for, you know, continuing to invest in our community. I think it's, you know, we've all seen what they've done to the properties to the south, and continue to do now by expanding to the property in the north. Again, I'll agree with my colleagues here on the scale and the height of the building. I think that needs to, to be reduced to, to an extent. And of course, the sidewalks and the entry at Pine Woods are all, you know, extremely important. But I also want to be realistic in the fact that we've had a vacant plaza for probably 10 years, maybe more. And at the end of the day, you need to have a tenant in a property to bring in revenue so that you can continue to build out the property. And it's extremely important here. We're not talking about a vacant piece of land, like across from the Culinary Institute, where we can play with the paper and, and design this beautiful project and say, "Okay, well now we can market to tenants, because, you know, this is all here." This is a, a site that, as it's been expressed multiple times, there's very weird property lines. There's easements, there's road front buildings taking up, you know, the frontage that is the most marketable space. You know, so we, we need to consider these things when we're reviewing the application. But I think what might help everybody is if we see a cohesive site plan. And put this building, scale it down. I think you guys did a great job on the landscaping and, and the building. It's, it's a beautiful building. We worked hard on it. But if you could present a full site plan and show everybody, you know, after we get a tenant and another tenant, this is, this is where we're going. So, okay, maybe Mavis isn't the best, the best use for the, for the property. But as a planning board, we, we can't dictate what businesses come in and out of plazas. We, we have no ability to do that, as long as it fits within our code. And so you can show the public and the board, "Hey, okay, we're going to put this building here, but we're going to put it here because it works with the whole site. And when we find the right tenant, this is what we're going to do." And I think, I think that would make people a lot happier. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Napoli?
I'd like to thank the two Nicks for coming every time. It's greatly appreciated. I want to thank the public for coming out tonight, for those who spoke, those who chose not to speak, but it came anyway. I think it's a great asset to the entire development to have the public come, speak whether you're for, against, or anywhere in between, because we all need to hear this. I'm not going to tell you a story, but I do have a quote I want to read to you. And as I was preparing for tonight, I thought it was rather appropriate. And it's from The Greenway Connections, and it's titled, "Choices Have Consequences That Can Last a Lifetime." Every municipality makes choices that change neighborhoods and landscapes. Each choice can add to or detract from the character of a village, town, or city. Many decisions reverberate beyond borders. True choices involve deciding what is most desirable for the community as a whole, not merely approving each proposal as it comes along, perhaps with a few concessions. Developers cannot be blamed for projects if they have followed the rules. We should not criticize a developer for reluctance to go back to the drawing board again and again, while a plant, while a local planning board struggles with site-specific design policy. Clearly presented plans and guidelines that indicate what the community wants and does not want say to developers and the public decision-makers, time, money, aggravation, that's the one I liked, and potential lawsuits. If we want new buildings to be compatible with existing neighborhoods, we must say so upfront. If we want better landscaping and pedestrian connections instead of parking lots, we must say so." End of quote. And I would say we probably have heard all that this evening from the public and from my esteemed colleagues. And I guess to follow along, I will tell you what I want. I think Ms. Dexter must have stolen my comments when I wasn't looking, because she has stated a lot of the same things. So I, I will also like to just add to what has been said already. The narrative that was dated August 3, 2016, stated that previous concerns have been addressed. However, when I read the latest on submitted plans, I was disappointed that I did not see that to be the case. The zoning for our town requires a full site plan from the start of this project, as noted in section 108-9.2D, and in the Schedule of Use Regulations 108, Attachment 1, under non-residential uses, where it states in part, quote, "Permitted use subject to site plan approval by planning board." In the section 108-3.1.1, it states, "The purpose of the Town Center Historic District is to retain the Hamlet character while permitting diversified tourist-dependent, non-residential uses that meets tourist needs." And obviously, we have all decided that that is what this area is. What has been previously stated by Ms. Leibold herself, 108-5.11B, the Town Center Historic District Standards states, "Developing public parks, commons, or small pedestrian plazas with amenities such as benches and landscaping must be encouraged." This all leads us right to the Greenway, which is Connections, which is section 108-1.5, states that local law, 2002, the town adopted Greenway Connections. In section 108-1.7, the corridor management plan, as stated by Ms. Dexter, it is discretionary action under this chapter, which regards to land use adjacent to or affecting Albany Post Road. It also recommends, it sets foot in the Albany Post Road slash Route 9 corridor management plans, Volume 1 and Volume 2, dated January 2006. And I mention that, because when you go to Volume 1 of the Albany Post Road, Route 9 corridor management plans, the executive summary, it states at the bottom of page 30, says, "Note: For additional improvements in this area, refer to Albany Post Road corridor study done by Burcois, Fish, Jacques Mart, dated February 2002." I am so sorry for all those numbers. I greatly apologize. I want to pass out to my colleagues... I want to pass out to my colleagues and for you all, just two basic samples. I don't know the one sitting back there.
You're entering into the record, the Albany Post Road corridor study, and by Buckhurst, Fish, and Jacques Marque?
Yes.
For the schematics, they're shown for the green space. Okay.
Having been a member of the Route 9 corridor study, and I know I've mentioned before, like, it is a wonderful study that was done. Some of it is extremely timely, some of it, you can tell it was done in 2002, we've moved along since then. But there are certain things within this study. The plan's done. When we were talking earlier about the Greenway space, putting, and you can see on your plan, just the huge difference it makes between what it looks like now and what with the green space right next to the bank as you come in. It softens that whole view. It takes away from the abyss of the blacktop that's like never-ending back there. And you can get a gazebo, you can get some benches, you can get places for people to come and sit for the public, the people who live across the street from Route 9, for the tourists that will come into the area. It will, and it will go a long way to helping you to acquire your 15% that you need at the approximate 29, 3,000 square feet extra landscaping that you need. Also, as pro-Greenway guidelines to help break up the blacktop and to reduce water runoff, the use of bricks pavers or textured surfaces for crosswalks and stalls with grass blocks, overflow areas are recommended, smaller diamond-shaped tree islands for parking. Such islands could help you meet the landscaping standards, also in the code. Providing parking, breaking it up so it's not looking so massive, it will look attractive and inviting. And since you're removing and upgrading the pavement in this area, I would think it would be easier to be adding more green space than to have the asphalt because it would go towards your stormwater requirements that is required by the DEC. I also want to just be very briefly that besides not meeting the spirit of tourism-related businesses, I know the commercial is allowed in this area. I'm concerned by the scale, and I don't think at this point it cannot be said enough. It is totally out of proportion to this area in the sense that there is no other area in, that has so many, let me backtrack, with the exception of those structures that house multiple tenants, which are not compatible, it doesn't work. If you look at Section 108-4.5G, the Architectural Feature Standards, it does state that large building design, where the building has a facade longer than 100 feet, shall present the appearance of a grouping of two or more small buildings, well-proportioned buildings incorporating elves, wings, verandas, portigos, courtyards, and similar elements as unifying features, end quote. The building is 129 feet, according to the latest submittal that we had, that I had noticed. So you either would have to change the design or bring it under the less than 100 feet, as has been previously stated. The 52 feet deep, I Googled when I was doing this presentation, and so don't hold me responsible, I Googled. And I put in for the longest full-size pickup truck. And according to Google, it is 263 inches, which is approximately 21.9 feet long. With your proposal of 52 feet deep, you could have two trucks back to back and still be able to walk around. You're not going to have that. So I guess I don't understand why it has to be so deep and long. We already addressed the height, and I have full faith that we'll be seeing a much lower building, so I'm not going to be too redundant. As with Ms. Dexter, I looked around the Hudson Valley where they've had three and four bays. I've seen where they've had six or seven, and they've been basically in larger, more expansive, open spaces. I could not find an example in any Hudson Valley town or village center that is deemed a historic district with a similar proposed scale that is before us. I would suggest that to keep in the historic character of this district, I would recommend a building of three or four bays. I feel it's much more reasonable and approachable. It would allow the building to be recessed back, as we've mentioned before. If it's that much smaller, you could recess it back. You could have a small green space in front, and it still will allow you to have behind it south enough land for an infiltration area for water runoff in the rear. And I would like to just end, I think this could be such a dynamic revival of this shopping center with, we just continue looking at how we can revive this entire center. We are in the year 2016. We have so many resources before us. I will not even bore you with the fact that I just came upon where you can have roadways, bikeways that are solar. I was like, wow, can you imagine having solar bikeways? I mean, we can do that. We can do a lot more than what we have so far proposed. I thank you, and I do look forward to working with you every single time we see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Denapoli. Mr. Groninger, I'll start with you next.
Having had a tourist business in the very front of this property for over 18 years, my wife and I own Forever Christmas, I'm kind of sad to see this now being developed as a tire center. I got to be very honest with you. I think tourism is part of what Hyde Park, it is our history, it is our heritage, and once we convert to this type of usage, we're stuck with it. However, I will also refer to a prior planning board who, Monroe Muffler, approximately one mile south of here, they also were going to have their bays face Route 9. As a part of that planning board, they asked that the building be rotated 90 degrees. And I am well aware, at least of the one down in Fishkill, it's essentially a square building. Okay? That would fit on your site, I believe. You may even be able to get the same number of bays because you use a back-to-back bay system. I asked that you please look at the other Mavis buildings that are out there, consider turning it 90 degrees, and essentially more of a square building. This will protect the residences on the west side of Route 9. It will dramatically reduce the noise. And as others have mentioned, obviously, when you have evergreens, changing your planning around, there's wonderful noise dampening effects. So please reconsider the building that is there. Go back to the Mavis people and consider turning it 90 degrees. And I'll just make a minor mention, one of the things that got me on this planning board, when the planning board prior to us, or as a group, they rotated Monroe 90 degrees, and in fact, we ended up with a solid concrete block wall facing Route 9. Please put a nice wall on that side if you rotate it. That was an error on the planning board's part many years ago.
So is the dumb stone wall. No offense, I was in the audience, I watched, and they didn't specify that it needed to be a field stone, historic-looking wall, so it's just that stacked stuff. At any rate, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I'm going to probably take an unpopular stance here. I think it's extremely important to this town to have a viable business district. Now, by viable, I mean businesses that can make money. As we're talking here, we have people who are on this board wanting the clients to spend more money and make less building so they can collect less rent. At some point, obviously, it doesn't become viable. They want everybody, you know, to know what the entire shopping center is going to be like, and Macy's going to close 100 stores. Pretty soon, if things keep going the way they're going, brick-and-mortar stores are going to be a rarity. It's no longer viable for us to come and play pick and choose, and let's have this wonderful thing because there's a steady flow of commerce coming in. There is no steady flow of retail commerce coming in anymore. This shopping center has been a blight on this town for a lot of years, and people here in this neighborhood, it's detracting from the value of your houses, whether you know it or not. All right? So I'm going to take the unpopular stance, we try to work with these people and make sure that they can at least make a living and invest more money in the town. We have staged shopping centers before. We did it with Shop 'n Shop. We didn't make them, complete the whole thing until they rented it out. We did the same thing with the Havlin Shopping Center. All right? It's impractical for us to want all this stuff and all these sidewalks and all this landscaping and everything from somebody who's going to have one more tenant. All right? You know, I think that this town, we've got enough vacancies, we've got Hyde Park Motors, and we're starting to live in a different age now. I think it's time that we try to work with people and create a viable business district and have enough faith that if we can create traffic in a shopping center, that they're going to look at little shops and big shops and restaurants and this kind of thing. All right? We're all, you know, held up on the negative, oh, it's going to be noiser, it's going to be this. Okay? And it doesn't have a tree here, but it has to start somewhere. And that shopping center has to become viable if this town's going to succeed. I do, on the other hand, think that we can work with the height of the building, get it down, get it to where we can make a living. Where's my round of applause?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I do want to just stress two things. One, for the record, with Stop 'n Shop, we did require that the, all the building be shown for future phases. It was redesigned. I'm not saying that's analogous here because that was one connected long building, and we did not make them redo the credit union that has come forth now. So there is something different there. And with the Havlin Plaza, we did require the whole thing to be done. Because again, it's a connected, they're all connected, all the storefronts there, so it's a little different.
Yeah, we did the bank later.
Yeah. At any rate, I just want to point out that there's, they're not, this is a standalone building and a shopping center. It's not the same thing as one big, long series of small stores with inside one big, huge building. Ms. Kane?
Hello. Thank you. Well, going last, in terms of board members, is, I guess, a blessing and a curse because a lot has been said. I do have a number of points I want to go over, and I think first I might surprise my colleagues by saying I want to agree with Mr. Murphy. We do need a viable business district, and expecting a steady flow of retail commerce as there was in the past may not be realistic. But we do need businesses that will be supported by our town. We have an aging community. We need a walkable community for things that people need on an everyday basis. We need the drugstore, the grocery store, those kinds of things to be safe and accessible. And being able to walk to a tire center, although we do already have one, would be handy. And being able to walk from a tire center to other small businesses would be useful. That being said, I have a number of issues with this project. I do agree that we should have a phased plan, that having a proposal for one area of the lot and saying, well, we'll come up with other things when we get other tenants, it's not conducive to the larger success of the project because what you propose now may preclude other businesses, other kinds of businesses, from wanting to come. I'm going to go down my prepared list of comments, just because it's easier for me to remember that I've gone over everything. Just for my own reference and to help other people who have more spatial issues, the proposed building right now is 125 feet, excuse me, 129 feet long by 50 feet deep and 34.4 feet high. The Monroe that's in town is 90 feet long, 50 feet deep, yes, 50 feet deep and 28 feet high with six bays. So proportionally, that's a lot of space for only two more bays. And you're saying you expect 25 visits a day over eight bays, so that's three cars per bay a day. I mean, it's up to Mavis to figure out if that's a viable business, but it seems a little silly to me. Let's see. The interior height for, I've been speaking to people who work in the car repair business, and in order to have an SUV on a lift, you only need 15 feet of interior height. So this proposed height just seems completely out of line. People have gone over the bulk regs that it needs to appear to be two or more buildings, so I'm not going to go over that. In terms of open space, according to current calculations, although Mr. Dupree seemed to adjust that in the beginning of the meeting, you need at least 2,900 square feet of green space. Your green space needs to equal 15% of your total parking. The lot that's in the front, that's next to the TEG parking lot, and if you look at what Ms. Denapoli so nicely handed out for us, the Post Road Corridor Study, I think the green space here is actually that lot. In the past, I know there've been comments that maybe that's not an appropriate place because it seepage pits, but in fact, every single person in Hyde Park has septic tanks and septic fields with their grass growing over it and their children playing on it. So I think it's a perfect place for a green space to break up all of that parking and would be cheaper and easier than repairing blacktop and having to rip it up again if you had something else going on. In terms of sidewalks, the corridor study on Page 21 shows sidewalks from what was at the time Grand Union all the way out to Pine Woods. On your plan, you show landscaping and no sidewalks. So I think that needs to be addressed. There needs to be better and safer interior pedestrian movement plan. As Ms. Dexter said, if I were at Mavis and I wanted to go to the Feeds Plus store, I don't think that there's a complete and safe way to do that as a pedestrian. Let's see. That in the plan, and again, this can be phased, but in the plan, there need to be sidewalks along Pine Woods Road, along your whole entire property line. Okay. In terms of noise, the building as proposed facing Cromwell, I think, is, the noise levels are too high. The noise tests, as we spoke about before, were done during the winter with the doors closed, and that's not appropriate. The totals were averaged. We need the actual highs and lows in order to be able to assess it appropriately. The decibel levels, I believe, are way too high. The decibel levels, I believe, are way too high. There are apartments next door. I'm sure that the person who owns that building, when the noise drives their tenants nuts, is not going to be really happy. And again, as was mentioned by my colleagues, I would not want to sit in the pocket park with decibel levels that high. And I certainly wouldn't encourage anybody else to, since it could potentially damage their hearing. The pocket park itself, in fact, on Plan SP1 is designated as an infiltration area. So really, what you're dressing up is an area that you have to have for stormwater control. And I appreciate that, but maybe your money would be better invested doing something more basic there and putting more green space out where people can see it and might actually use it. In fact, when you are on Route 9 and you look up, there's an alley in between, I believe it's Ruth Masuda's building and goes to the back of the proposed Mavis, there's a stockade fence there. I don't know who actually owns that fence right now, but as I've said before, I, I would feel uncomfortable sitting back there. It's not really accessible. I don't think unless somebody told you it was there, you wouldn't really know it, you wouldn't come upon it easily. So I don't think it's the best use of resources. The noise level also could have definite deterrent to other businesses that might want to come, that might be more tourist-based, such as restaurants or cafes in the future. God help us, we need sewer. The truck movement, again, to, to safety issues, which are definite concern of mine. The truck movements going out onto Pine Woods are completely unsafe. The meter pit location needs to be addressed because where it's proposed, it precludes improvement of that intersection. And I think maybe, maybe Liz will address this in a bit, but there was a comment from our consultants that on the plan, it talks about construction traffic going, I think you have it going south, and the construction traffic may need to go north because of easement agreements with McDonald's, but that's a minor issue compared to everything else. And I would encourage you to follow the Greenway and Corridor Study in your future plans.
Thank you. I would normally speak, but I'm going to let the consultant speak so I can conclude toward the end. Ms. Moss, welcome back. We haven't seen you in a while. It's nice to see your lovely face here. Do you want to add comments?
No, I was just happy to hear that the applicant's goal is to stay within the 65,000 square feet for scale and I think achieving that will also achieve several of the other goals that have been discussed.
Could you just make, you're in agreement, you're the zoning administrator, this is your call. A second floor used for tire stores because it's part of the overall use would then count towards scale?
Yes, as will the mezzanine that I didn't count in the original scale because it was added when Amish Market went in. And I don't have the square footage for that, so that needs to be added in. I don't know if the, the other buildings have basements, so that hasn't been added in. But it's square footage of all floors, of all buildings, including attics.
I don't know if there's a basement either. Thank you. The applicant and the consultants can tell us that next time.
Excuse me. Can we just ask, does the Amish Market have a basement? Because we've had a whole morning discussion on that. No? Any of the buildings have a basement?
Mrs. Sotero?
Yeah, I think there's been a lot, you know, of comments, so I'm not going to go over all of them again. We'll issue a memo. We had some concerns on the sound analysis that was done also. I think a lot of the things have already been said. I will note one thing, when I talked to Kelly, I think yesterday, on some of my concerns on the noise study, specifically the two, two Mavises that had the sound analysis done in the wintertime with the doors closed. Kelly had said that she talked to the consultant about that prior and the consultant made a comment that in the wintertime, and again, I don't, this is something that I have to look at or we have to look at, but after thinking about it, you know, it might make some sense that in the wintertime with, you know, the temperatures being colder, that sound does tend to travel, you know, like further. And, you know, I thought about it for a minute and that might make some sense. I'm not saying that that's, that's, that's the right application for this particular site, but it did make a little bit of sense when Kelly did, you know, mention it. So we have some comments.
Are you saying it would travel through the doors and then continue on further? Closed doors, it would travel through first?
Yeah, because of the fact that, you know, the temperature, you know, is colder and when colder, sound travels, travels.
There's also no foliage and prior, prior air.
Right, right. So anyway, so again, we don't need to get into that. I just, I just thought that was like an interesting one. So we're going to have some comments on that. Again, somebody had mentioned that we need to have more of, you know, the data that, you know, supported, you know, the study. I think Tori mentioned that, you know, the readings and stuff. The landscape plan, again, we're not going to comment on the specific plants, but one thing that we saw and I think other people have said the same thing, that the landscape plan had plantings that were going in in front of other people's, people's properties from this site further north to the Pine Woods, you know, intersection. I don't think that was really the intent and, you know, my guess is that that's not really going to happen, right?
Right, yeah. I mean, I think we're being generous.
Yeah, it was probably a little too generous. I did talk to Kelly already and many people have mentioned about the Pine Woods access and the widening of, you know, the radiuses, and I don't believe that that's going to be an issue.
Wait a moment. There's a water pit that we were told, or a water meter pit that we were told has to be where it is.
Talking curbing now, we're just talking curbing.
But I, I looked at that access and according to what you showed us, when the truck comes in, as it's traveling east on Pine Woods, it's come off 9.
Right.
It goes into the right-hand lane completely before it can turn back and get into the...
Oh, if we widen out, you know, the radiuses, give them, give them a better turning radius on the curbing.
And that's not going to impact the location of the water meter pit because that's what I'm concerned about.
I don't believe so, but we'll work with them on it. I mean, you can, you know...
I'll point out too, when the truck exits, the way it's shown, it goes into the left-hand lane, when it's traveling west. And it does, until it gets past the old Dance Works 1 building, building 4 it's labeled, it's still on the wrong side of Pine Woods. So I had not really realized until you showed us, I guess because it hasn't been used, all the buildings there, that when that was approved back when, it must not have been approved for the size trucks we have now.
It actually is used, Feed's Plus, I think Joe, I don't know if you want to comment, but he, I think he's talked about this at the last meeting, that they have a tractor-trailer, I'm sure you guys see it, that comes once a week or twice a week. And so people are using that, that as the truck turning exits.
I'm shocked that it's, there hasn't been an accident then because the turning, it clearly shows that each time that truck goes, veers into the opposite lane than what it's supposed to be in each time.
Well, I think...
But just softening the curbs can, can solve that?
Yeah, we're out to, you know, work on it, but I mean, if we widen out the radiuses, right now, they just come right, right out, straight. There's no, you know, like radius to, so, you know, your wheels, your wheels will track. So anyway, so we'll look at that. There's been a lot of comments about sidewalks on Pine Woods Road and, you know, we need them. I will just say that since I've been here, in my 21st, you know, year, we've, we've, we've had several grants to try to put sidewalks there. There is an issue there in terms of the fact that Pine Woods Road is not a dedicated town roadway. It's a user, user highway. So there's been issues in terms of can we acquire, you know, the right-of-way to put, you know, the sidewalk and so there's some...
If I may counter you again on this one, no offense, because you're our consultant, what that impacts is the town's ability to take the land from the owner to put a sidewalk in because with a dedicate, without a dedicate, where the user wrote, they own the land to the middle of Pine Woods. We are suggesting that they put a sidewalk on their own property.
Oh, just on their own property. Okay. I'm sorry. And then I misunderstood. I thought we were talking about going, going all the way to the intersection. Okay. And then the only other thing is we'll have to have some, some additional detour. Detour sign is behind the McDonald's and some other signs that are closer to Park Plaza during other construction because the area behind, you know, the Mavis is going to be a one-way. So we need to prevent vehicles from Park Plaza from getting that far. So there'll need to be some advanced warning signs that the access to Pine Woods, if they want to go out that way, is going to, is going to be closed off.
Your colleague, Mr. Lern, had looked at the approval for the Town Center South and McDonald's specifically, and that shows McDonald's delivery trucks exiting to the south. So it's his suggestion that Park Plaza be able to exit that way, not in other words, make it a one-way south and make it a one-way north.
Okay. He didn't mention that to me.
Sorry, that was what he told us in the agenda meeting. So, because again, that's how it was shown from McDonald's.
We need more, we need, we are going to need more, more construction signage, so that's, you know, the highlights.
Thank you. Ms. Axelson?
I, I, I do have a few items, but a lot of comments have been raised and we're going to take into account public commentary and planning board's commentary. As Michael mentioned, I did do some scale calculations, so what I generally found in this review was that some progress had been made, but there were a number of issues where I needed more information to see if things had been properly addressed. One of the issues was how the parking was laid out and the number that was counted. And again, you know, to reiterate the possibility of reducing parking a little bit and adding more green space, I think there's a way to do that. One way to handle that is to actually calculate in the zoning table landscaped area and sort of filling in the blank there. Let's see. And I did have some comments on vehicular access and some of it had to do with rounding off the shape of the planters on Pine Woods Road, as we were just discussing. And regarding pedestrian access, the question I had, even if, I think the idea of Pine Woods Road sidewalks in the future would make good sense and I think ultimately it would be good to see a phased-in plan so that somebody can walk from Route 9 to Mavis to the feed store and be able to walk over to Pine Woods. That is the ultimate goal, I think, on this site. But more immediately, there's, we need some more clarification on the plans. How would a person walk to and from these places? Some of it has to do with, you know, planned striping and what looks like a sidewalk, is it a sidewalk or not? Or is it a median with plants? Is a striped area a fire lane versus an actual pedestrian way? So we need some clarity there. And when I saw the trees and plantings along Route 9, I got all excited because I thought, oh, isn't that great? The planning board said they wanted to see more planting there and of course, it is off-site. So stretching a little bit here, I don't know if there's a way for the applicant, if they are inclined to speak with those adjoining property owners and consider obtaining permission or easements to do those plantings and consider maintaining them. And otherwise, of course, if that's not an option, to revise the plans accordingly. So it's a little more clear. Those are really the big highlights. A lot of it has to do with architectural elevations and some of the other comments that have been raised, so we'll express it in our review.
Thank you, Ms. Bonaro.
No. All right, all right, together.
Did it not work?
I don't know. Okay. I'll go through these quickly. Scale is an important issue. The zoning administrator also did scale calculations and they didn't match what was on the plans. And so the sooner you solve that, the better because if it turns out that you do exceed scale, you may need variances and/or a special use permit, which is just more paperwork and more approvals. So you should figure that out as soon as possible. When you do do the scale, also provide us with the basis for the calculations, not just the number, so we can verify it. The small lot that was formerly, I guess, part of the bigger property that just has some parking spaces on it now, can you clarify whether that's going to be merged with this lot?
It will be.
It will be? Okay. Are you submitting a subdivision to do that?
It's a ministerial act. It's a lot line consolidation.
So do all the numbers show the proposal as including that acreage? I just want to be clear that this is all happening. All right. So we'll check with the zoning administrator on whether, what applications are needed for that. Where the Mavis is now, it looks like you have to go through Miss Masuda's property in order to get to that parking lot. And so I would like clarification on what easements exist to allow you to do that because otherwise you don't have access to that portion?
It's actually the other way around. So we have access to the parking spaces and she doesn't, but we'll, we'll make it clearer on the map so you can see it.
Okay. And then the cross easement, I know that the two lots, the Plaza and this shopping center are owned by different entities, but the McDonald's approval does rely on this access way and this is a good time for us to have a, an actual formalized cross-access easement between the two properties.
Do you have a standard that you want us to use for the town?
We, we don't have a, a standard.
But you have templates that you can send, right? For cross-access agreements?
Sure, I can send a template. I can send a sample. I believe we had one for Dunkin' Donuts and Stop and Shop.
We do.
So I can send that one as one that was approved. And that's, that's it for me for now.
Before I go into my comments, I just need to read into the record that we did receive written comments today by email. They came from Carol Lally, Christine Brandl, Joan and Bob Meyerhofer, Bill Cullen at BND Management, there was no address there, Carol Kohan, writing as a resident and the former county historian, Christine Patron, who lives at 6 Cromwell Place, and Johannes Vanderly, who I believe does not live in town, but lives in Clinton in the, kind of the Hyde Park Central School District area. Those will be entered into the record automatically. Then I want to go back to some things that I brought up in the March 2nd pre-application meeting. 108-4.4A to A2. And by the way, colleagues, I love that you're now quoting code. Thank you. Makes me not feel so alone. Any structure visible from any point along the boundary of a designated place on the state or national registry of historic places, which this is because the Bergstattenberg House is next door, no building shall be allowed with a height exceeding 35 feet. That's been brought down. I think you heard tonight that needs to be brought down further. But also, no volume greater than 60,000 cubic feet. We need a cubic feet calculation for the structure unless you're going to reduce it substantially, but just make sure that it's, whatever is, revisions are made, that it's below 60,000 cubic feet or ask for relaxation of that standard. 108-4.5B2D, parking shall not dominate any site when viewed from the street providing frontage. Off-street parking shall be developed as a network of small, well-distributed and clustered areas surrounded by landscaping. That in 108-4.5B2J, any off-street parking for 17 or more vehicles shall provide curb planting islands or beds. Note, in the parking area, equal to 15% of the total square footage of all stalls and aisles. As I said, now you show 154 spaces, that's approximately 2,500 square feet. It's actually 2,4950. And that stall, not including the aisles. So you need a minimum of 3,750 square feet of landscaping and that should be in the parking area, which is why I'm leading this up to, I think that it's a good idea to think about adding more green in through here because right now it's an expansive asphalt, a lunar landscape, if you will, and the illustrations that I think it was Ms. Donapoli showed from the BFJ study do show a softening and I think would get to that, that requirement. I don't know how you, can you show us how you, how you calculated the required parking? I'm going to guess it's just all retail uses with a guess at number of, of employees, but I didn't see that anywhere. It could be that I overlooked it. We do need to recalculate scale. If there's a mezzanine in the Grand Union, that needs to be calculated as well, plus the second floor of the proposed building. The sidewalk along Pine Woods, you've heard from many people tonight, the turning radii, radius, radii, you'll need to work with Pete on that to make sure that that is, that two sides are softened so that we don't create a potential for traffic issues there. I agree with my colleagues that the internal movement for pedestrians could be improved. For example, when, if you left the former Amish Market, there's a striped area that shows, leads you to what would appear to be a sidewalk. Those are actually just raised curved beds. And then when you go further, if you're aiming toward, to go on the east side of the internal roadway, if you wanted to walk all the way to Pine Woods, you can't. So whether that should be a sidewalk or not, I don't know. For me personally, I'm not sure... For me personally, I'm not sure to construct it. I just would like to see how you have it moved. For me personally, as I've said, I'm fine with not seeing what you're going to do to the right-hand side. I don't want to, you know, waste money actually on that. But you did hear from, I counted four people who said they want a full and cohesive site plan to show what you'd be doing over there beyond, I guess, just the concept image. That satisfied me. The reversal of the temporary direction of traffic needs to be worked through with Mr. Sotero's office. I thought the noise assessment was probably inadequate for several reasons. One, I noticed that the, on one that Ms. Leiboltz noted, it's 14 Pine Woods, the ambient sound is 43 to 46 and then it goes up to 56. But at 5 Cromwell Place, it showed that the ambient sound was 53 to 59, but when they added in the factors, it went down to 46 to 50. I don't know how you go down in sound above the ambient levels. There's something that's not correct there. Similarly, if we're looking when, if we're adding up the ambient, the sound impacts with the ambient base, 56 for 14 Pine Woods is actually pretty close to 60. And what surprised me there is, is that you've got Grand Union, the bays face the west, and yet this building is east and behind the grand, the former Grand Union building, but somehow it went up 10 decibels, which also confuses me unless, if we'd seen more of the data. I'm taking that the sound must have bounced off the back of the Masuda Building where Verizon Wireless is and gone back up and over. And what concerns me there is, is that if, as my colleagues noted, if we're going to see different kinds of businesses locate into the west and north of this plaza where the emptier, or one building that's left is filled, how's that going, what were the sound, what, how did it bounce back to hit the other buildings? That's my curio, my, what I'm curious about. I know this was done before we concluded that what we, another place we wanted to see as a receptor, instead of having two on Cromwell Place, was actually to have one in the north section, northeast section of the site. That's not included, but it, now it raises concerns that it might be above 60 over there too. And that I think would then limit what other businesses would want to go there because you wouldn't want your customers to have sound that upset them. I think the noise assessment, we haven't heard from your sound engineer, has he reviewed it?
No.
Are we going to redo the noise assessment study or?
We'll wait for Pete's memo and then whatever it is that he's adding that they'd like to see, we'll.
Okay, thank you. And some comments back to earlier Morris Associates memo. Ms. Axelsson had said, considering revising the width of the columns between the bays, your response was that just cannot be done because it's to a Mavis standard. It would appear to me that if you dropped a bay or two or three, that you could. And I think that would break up the expanse therefore of all the glass. That's what my colleagues were concerned with. There are some new striped areas. One is shown in the 25, 25 acre lot. I don't understand what that's for. There's also a new one in the parking area that's between 9 and the building. It looks like they're just put there to stripe so that no one can park there, but, and I can't quite tell. It could be that you've chosen that striped area so that you now direct one area, one way in to the parking that's right near the 20, the 0.25 acre.
It's no storage?
If it's not, if it's no storage, it wasn't labeled there either?
No.
Pardon me?
It was a result of the turning radius analysis.
Instead of striping, shouldn't those become green to get to the 3950 that you're required to have?
The drive overall. The stripe, that's the path.
Oh, so, okay, I'm sorry. That's why I couldn't figure that out. So this is just for.
During analysis of the trucks going in and out of Mavis, we plot them down. We basically.
Oh, oops, sorry. Thank you.
Basically, when we did the turning analysis of the trucks going in and out of Mavis for the loading, we found the areas where the tracking would go. And the tracks have to go over it, so it can't turn them green. So we striped them so that there wouldn't be cars parked there.
It's okay, I understand that now. I couldn't, I couldn't figure that out at first because I thought, why are they striping these places? It could be parking, they're not going to be parking.
If you look, if we look at the turning.
You have to plug this in, Mr. Sweet, this is not plugged in because we had.
Yes, we had a problem over there.
We had a problem over there.
Here, let me plug it in.
No, it's, yeah, this is good.
Now it works? Now it works.
You gotta plug it in.
Grab the mic.
That's why, that's why. I thought it was just me.
Did you shut the sun?
I always did. Must be me.
Okay.
We'll show that clearer, but it is shown on the turning.
It's a great clarification, so long as I know. I didn't understand what it was, like.
We're trying not to make one map cluttered by showing it, so we show on the turning map where the stripes are there because of the turning radii. And then when you look at the site plan map, you see stripes, but the purpose is shown elsewhere.
Thank you. I will type up my copious comments and get them over, I mean, these copious comments I heard tonight to get them over to you. Is there anything you'd like to add? Yes, no? You feel browbeat, I'm sure. I want to thank everyone for coming out. As I said before, I think these comments that you've heard from the board and from the public will help improve the site. If you'd like an offline meeting, we can certainly arrange that before the next iteration. Do you want us to continue the public hearing for two weeks? Or do you want to take a month? Or what would you like to do? A month? Everyone agreement?
So moved.
Anybody have that date in front of them?
It could be the 21st then.
Second one is September.
So making a motion to continue the public hearing to September 21st.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll see you then. If we can speak in the meantime. Do you guys want to take a quick break or would you like to continue through the rest since we're almost done?
I think I'm done.
We lost one.
We'll take a two-minute break.
Your what?
Is Bourbon Street Liquor, or Bourbon Street?
River Street Bourbon.
And the applicant is here because they're proposing to do an exterior upgrade, an extensive one, to the existing structure that includes a cultivated stone veneer on the outside as well as new roof shingles?
Yes.
And could you just make sure you can use the microphone? Because otherwise, Mr. Sweet's going to be over here shaking his finger at you too.
So I brought you some pictures. I don't know if you all saw them or not, but I can bring them up to you.
The, I can tell you this, seeing the stone, it looks a lot better than seeing the picture.
Oh, thank you. I didn't, I couldn't.
It's such a weird yellow. Oh, yeah, that does, that does add a lot more. The other one kind of looks like particle board.
It did look like particle board, that's what we couldn't see. So Ms. Moss sent me to the buildirect.com website to look at this. And I have to say, even there, it doesn't look as good as it does in real life.
Here, let me back it up so you can feel it.
So these are, this will be a series of, each one of these will be used on the exterior. This is the actual width?
It's six inches by 24 inches.
Okay. And each one that's six is, each one will have these color stones. Right. It's a long night. Long night. So for you, for, I just want to make sure everyone's clear, this is similar to Havlin Plaza where we had, it was just for an exterior change. Because, I'm guessing, I haven't talked to Mr. Westermeyer, the building inspector, but because this, these were wooden walls and now it's stone, it requires a building permit because they weren't load-bearing.
Yes.
And as everyone knows, I kind of put my foot down after we did one waiver of a commercial site plan and then I watched pigs and goats and Elvises and everything else pop up because we have no control of the site plan. So we have a survey. The survey shows a different location of the sign than where it is. But we've, as, in the past, we've done this as well, where we take an onion skin layover, attach it over this and show where the current sign is. Nothing else is changing.
Nothing else is changing.
I might add, this is also, I confirmed, and Ms. Moss knows, this building is actually the last building that's part of the TAP grant, so it's going to have a new sidewalk and new landscaping put in front of it. So it's going to really look, it's going to look terrific.
It's going to look beautiful.
So as part of that kind of upgrade, we're going to have an exterior upgrade. So since we're not waiving this site plan because it's on Route 9, it needs to be referred to county planning as part of 239M, the law. Let me just throw it open to the board. Do you guys have any questions of the applicant? And by the way, your name is, for the record?
Linda, Linda Conforti.
I mean, I know that, but just to make sure.
Well.
You have a lovely father.
Thanks.
Have you any questions for the applicant?
Are you going to continue single usage, it's just going to be one business in there?
Well, I do have a separate entrance. And we have cleaned it out recently. And so in the.
Oh, yes, the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have a separate entrance and recently we have cleaned it out. And so we're considering putting another small business there.
Got you, got you. No, I wish you success with it.
Well, thank you.
And this is a great improvement.
Ms. Moss?
Starting next month, we'll, I'll be celebrating my 19th year in business.
Congratulations.
Location, thank you.
That's great.
Yeah.
Ms. Moss?
Long time.
Did you work with the applicant to find us an additional sign location for the exterior? Or do you want to have it, do you want to show another location for a sign? Because if you do, it's easier.
Well, we talked about putting it to the right of the door.
Okay.
And we were, I was thinking about maybe four feet by two feet.
I think, I'm sure that's allowed by, I think that's allowed by code. I'm not going to say anything. Tab will work that out.
You'll have to submit the elevation.
Horizontal? Yes. Yes.
No, no, that's, that was to Ms. Moss.
Let me move over.
There you go. And your directory sign, or rather, your sign right now just says Bourbon Street Liquors. Would you add the name of the other business to that or?
Well, I would wait until the new town code came through and then I would do a double panel.
There will be no change in the town code for signage.
For the sign.
The non-conforming.
Oh, got you.
Remember that one we redid the sign thing? What's that? 2040, right?
No, that's next year, right. The town board extended the time of amortization when non-conforming signs must come into conformance by two years. Gotcha. Thank you.
Right, so we have another year on that.
Okay, so this is actually pretty easy. As I said, that's why we don't.
I have not yet written the letter recommending waiver of the public hearing. I did that for the adjoining building and I intend to do that for this one as well.
I wasn't even going to ask to set a public hearing. All I want, what I was going to do, we have, thank you, Tad, for writing it. We have a resolution where we typed the action tonight for secret purposes, referred to DC Planning. And we can ask, Ms. Levorn ways on vacation till next week, but we can ask for expedited review because this is very simple. And if we can get it back in the next two weeks, we can go ahead and put this on the agenda and consider approval without a public hearing. That sound good?
We can make it complicated, it's simple, but we can make it.
Well.
Can I ask a question about the building? I'm sorry. Is the roof a new roof or is it a painted roof?
We're going to paint the roof and then take the shakes off and then replace it with an architectural shingle.
Have you picked a color over there?
You know, I just got it yesterday.
Oh, okay.
So I haven't really had a time to pick. It would probably be dark brown.
So the top is a metal roof?
Correct.
Okay, so that's going to be painted?
Painted.
And the shakes that are, come down?
Will come down and then this architectural shingle will go up.
Okay, and the intention is that the shingle and the paint will match?
Yes.
Okay.
If Home Depot does it correctly, it will match, yes. And then the sides will be painted, a lighter color in the back will also be painted. Only the stone will be on the front.
Right. The stone will extend around the sides, in other words? It'll be just facing Route 9, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It'll be a light tan. It'll probably be closer to this color.
And how do you finish the corners?
The corners?
Yeah, you'll, I mean, where the stone ends, is it just?
It'll just add.
The cut edge?
Yeah, it'll just be a cut edge, yeah.
Probably, they probably have some kind of.
They'll bullnose it.
They probably have some kind of like a corner piece that, you know, ends it, so it's.
A code.
Right.
Is that something that you can check with your?
Sure.
Stone guy about?
Sure.
Anything else? Who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Resolution typing action and referring the application to Duchess County Department of Planning and Development, date August 17, 2016, resolution number 16-35. Whereas, 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 and now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a Type 2 action under seeker, two, directs its acting secretary to refer the site plan, to, to refer the site plan set to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239-M of the General Municipal Law.
Second.
Need further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I should have thanked you in the first place for opening and operating a business for 19 years in our community and also for investing in the property to give it more curb appeal. Route 9 really is looking better and this is one more step forward.
Well, I'd like to be a part of it.
Yeah, I'm glad that you are a part of it already. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Hampson, when we send this over to county planning, we can request an expedited review, so a response to re-receive before September 7. We'll placeholder this on the 7th to consider taking action if we hear from them. That actually gives them three weeks, so that should be plenty. I can't imagine not having this on that agenda. So thank you, and thank you for being our acting secretary again still right now. And that's it.
Thank you.
So we'll see you September the 7th. Okay? Thank you. And if you could have an answer for Ms. Kane about how it ends?
Sure, I'll check with Building Direct and see how that.
Okay.
Pans out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the, pardon me? The next item on the agenda is Hushen-Statsburg Storage. Mr. Turner, my goodness, you are a patient, patient person.
Had a choice.
So this is submitted as a site plan amendment and Tad opined that the decals are advertising or signage because they advertise pictorially what the business is. So he's going to, they'll be before the, I think you might already have submitted to the ZBA?
Correct, we are on the 24th meeting with the ZBA?
Yeah.
That's 22nd.
22nd. So this is your first time before the ZBA, right?
Correct.
So the ZBA will consider, they'll, they'll look at the action, they'll probably set a public hearing. They don't always type the action immediately, sometimes they wait for that. But they generally refer things back to us for comment for variances like this, that are commercial site variances. And so I just had this up for discussion. Has everyone had a chance to look at this application so far? Do you want to show it to us?
Yeah, no, I can show it.
So initially, he had, the owner, Mr. Hushens, had a few green on.
Correct.
And you can, you can tell the board why he wants to add more, what happened when he took them off.
Well, what he ended up by finding is that in just going through this type of business, typically about 50 to 55% of people who go and rent from a storage facility actually see the facility before, you know, and then they say, oh, you know, great, it's a storage facility. Well, Scott has nothing on the entire building that says "storage facility" except for a sign. And cars going by at 55 miles an hour, you don't usually see the sign. You're looking straight down the road, you're going as fast as you can. You're, you're heading for a destination. He found when he put those few panels up, all of a sudden, phone calls went up. He got more interested people. And he said, "Oh, you know, this is something to really look into." And then, when I told him he had to take them down because he didn't have, you know, permission to do them, calls went down. And in fact, he says it's almost like he basically closed business. You know, it's like he has had-- It's gotten that slow in regards to responses. So, I said, "Well, if you wanna put those-- If you wanna propose those panels to go back again, you need to go through the proper process." I said, "One thing you gotta do is change the green." Because he had that luminescent--
Neon green, acid green.
And so, what we've ended up by doing, we went back through the various colors that are available. And this is what's called a true green. It's more in line with the green that he's using back on the doors, on the units that are behind the building. And so, what we did is to try to come up with some type of patterning of these things across the face. So, that way, it would make sense. And one of the things that we also did is, and I know the code says not to, we are covering windows. And on the south side of the building, all the windows are basically blacked out. Because the inside storage units have walls against those windows. So, they're not doing anything. So, I figured, why not cover them up? And so, that's what was done to kind of create the pattern on this side of the building. Where on this side, we were looking to put them in between the various windows that currently exist. So, I know Scott is not, was not able to make it today. And he is really emphatic about trying to get this to be approved. Because he feels it's a vital component to his business after seeing what happened, you know, when he did have the panels up for a short period of time.
Well, I hadn't thought about it. But when you go by Guardian Self-Storage to the south, you, even though you mostly see the office, you can still see the rows and in this, you know, where the storage units are. And in this case, you're right, it's all behind the original building. Even the storage within the building, you don't see the roll-up sort of thing.
Correct. And so, that's one of the reasons why he was going with this type of-- I call it a graphic panel to represent what's going on.
A question, please. Well, as I go by it all the time, but I'm having a hard time visualizing what you see up front on, that's facing Route 9. That's, by putting up these green decals, that's how he's finding his businesses increasing?
What he found--
Not the ones on the side, because they're in the back. Who would see?
Oh, no, it's last year, before we got final approval, he put several of the signs over on this side.
Right.
And they had a really luminescent green to them. And when those panels went up, that's when all of a sudden, he started getting an increase of calls. Because people said, "Oh, you're a storage facility? I didn't know that." Because a lot of people, I would say, the older people remember this as being PDQ. An industrial facility creating computer parts. Or the younger people think of it as an abandoned building. So, he needs to try to do something to try to let them know that, hey, this is a storage facility.
And it's still a decal, but it's just not that harsh-- neon green, correct?
Correct. I mean, next time I do come in front of you, I meant to bring the samples with me. But I kind of grabbed the wrong folder.
It's okay. This was like I said, you didn't even-- I'm glad you came tonight just to explain to us. Because I didn't understand why there were more now. So, it's to give the illusion that the whole thing-- or not the illusion, it is all storage inside there.
Well, right now, this whole half is storage. He would like to be able to get the rest of it as all climate-controlled storage. But right now, Subaru has their parts and stuff--
Right, and the left--
--over here, so.
Okay, okay.
The only area, you know, the main central volume here, though, he is, you know, looking for, you know, business uses for that.
He has transitional builders in there now?
Correct, he has one client in there right now.
Is that in the main central section, or is it over to the--
They're over on this side, yeah.
Okay, okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Ms. Moss?
As part of this application, you might consider the location of the transitional builder sign. It looks off-center. And I'm not sure--
Is it shown?
--it's on the face of the part of the building where they are located. I'm not sure where they're located inside.
Well, they're located on this half of the building. This is the parking lot that they use. So, it's on this face here. Honestly, they, they came-- I should say, they made the sign, or they had it fabricated, they installed it.
There's no permit for it. It's an illegal sign. So, I'd like a permit application to come, at least come in. And you should consider where it goes on the building.
Yeah, I let Scott know, he needs to let them know about that.
Okay.
In my opinion, I think it should be brought around to the front side.
Yes, it should.
And get it off of this, because it's more relates to what--
Yes.
--their location.
That's correct.
So, he will be approaching them--
Okay.
--regarding that.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, comments?
Comments?
So, about the transitional builder sign? I mean, I can actually see that you would want it near where people would enter. That, that makes sense. Although, visibility is obviously a contributing factor. I don't think it makes sense to have the vinyl storage panels next to the transitional builder sign. I think that that's confusing as a, as a customer. That where, where am I actually going? You know, am I going to a builder, or am I going to the storage place? As somebody who lives in the town, I think the number of vinyl panels is excessive. I really have a problem with that. I understand about visual signage, and that that really is important. But, but that's a lot. And then, my last question, which actually maybe Mr. Groninger can help me with, is covering windows with the vinyl. So, then, the firefighters wouldn't know that those were windows, that those were potential points of access. Is that an issue?
I don't think so, but it's, that is a fair question when you block a window.
I mean, it's one thing to block it out, because then, the light doesn't get in. People can't see what's in there. But from the outside--
But there's an explosion from the inside out. Fire department may wanna weigh in on this one.
Okay, because one of the things that will need to be taken into consideration is because when the storage units were put inside, there is a wall, a physical metal panel wall that's up against that--
You can get into the window.
It's not, it's not that, it's just painted black.
No, no.
There's an actual wall behind it. And so, if somebody broke the window, they would encounter a metal panel behind it.
Windows and they won't explode out as windows.
And this was reviewed by the fire department?
It was, it went in front of the building inspector and--
No, I remember. I just, I had the impression that they were just--
Yeah, well, I mentioned blacked out, and I should've said blocked. They are unusable right now.
Yeah, in other words, a fireman could not swing in through or break the glass and get into anything. He'd be facing a metal wall.
Correct.
Okay. So, Tori, you think there's too many of them?
I do.
And, okay. Anybody else wanna weigh in, or?
Well, I gotta ask a stupid question. Does that constitute a sign under our code in any way, shape, or form, Tad?
To me, it does. It's a graphic symbol that represents the business on the property.
Storage. Storage, I should--
I think that's, I think that's a fair estimation of what it is.
Well, the applicant has accepted, otherwise, they wouldn't be before the ZBA. Although, you'd be before the ZBA if you didn't accept it. Because that's where you go to challenge her interpretation, too, now that I think about it. So-- Yes.
I get that you need to stand out. That, that makes sense to me. And when he did paint it, that building became beautiful. But it also does not look like a stor-- I mean, I can see that people would not go, "Oh, that's a storage unit place." I'm, I'm okay with that, to be honest. It's not jarring to me.
I mean, it's a commercial building, and it's a practical usage, so.
It definitely doesn't look like all the other storage units that I hate. I, you know, I think that's a fair price to pay, given the fact that you didn't demolish the building and just put a whole bunch of rows of, of stuff in there. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of okay with it.
Anyone else?
I'd have to agree. I don't see an issue with the vinyl decals. And I don't know if it necessarily needs to constitute as a sign. Because I, I look at an indoor climate storage control-- Climate-controlled storage facility on 55 in Poughkeepsie, Storage Depot. They put huge glass panels in as windows. So, you could actually see all the red doors on the inside of the building. So, I mean, it's, it's doing the same thing. So, I see the, you know, the need to do it. And I, I think it looks fine.
Diane?
Is it impractical to paint it instead of putting decals?
It was something that I know Scott and I talked about. But the thing that he said, "Well, maybe in time, you wanna take them down." And so, he wants to have the ability to just unscrew them if he does not wanna have them up anymore.
Because hearing Ms. Kane's concern, and I don't mean this to delay it by any means. It's almost like I would physically have to go and stand there and see it again. Because you think I have it in my head, and then, I go and I go, "Oh, yeah," or "no." Is it something that some of them could be taken away? So, it's just maybe descend to one that-- Trying to think of a compromise. Like, you know, where there's three, just descend to one. Where there are four, they just do the two center. Just some type of balance? Would that be helpful, or no?
I mean, it's something that I can talk with Scott and see if he would, would consider doing.
But I have Ms. Moss going, "Not so fast."
Well, no, I just, I just wanna make sure that you're just being introduced to this.
Yes.
The ZBA will refer it to you.
Right.
There is a significant variance for sign area that's being requested. So, you know, I'm not sure how it's gonna come out through the ZBA, but they will be looking for--
In other words, the ZBA could say, "We'll give you a variance of 50% instead of 75." And it would be up to the planning board with the applicant to work out what that 75% increase over what's allowed would be.
Well, I think 100 square feet is allowed, and it's over 500 square feet, so--
Whoa!
You're looking at a big variance.
This just makes a lot more sense as a business.
Wait, that's 500 square feet?
Correct. When you add up all the panels that he, he would like to show, it adds up to 500 square feet.
And, and it's also in the back.
He could mount--
Well, no, this is just what you see across the front of the building. I mean, because each of these panels is four by eight.
Thirty-two--
Thirty-two square feet.
I gotcha. That, that does add up fast.
Correct.
And it's a big building. It's a big building.
It just makes sense.
Is it also not just window, it's window and below it?
Well, it's--
Because maybe--
The whole graphic panel is this.
Right.
But they, they go down to the ground. They start at the ground level.
Well, I mean, we have them raised up off the ground.
But not alone.
But I mean, because there's so many, and--
The decal, wait, is the decal going to be, gonna be done that way? So, it'll look like it's half-open, half-shut?
That's exactly the way it's gonna be, correct.
And the sign area is just the green, or it's the whole space?
No, it's the whole thing.
Oh, okay.
Because it's looking like a door.
The green didn't seem to add up that much. So, that's more like-- Okay, okay.
Why aren't these ar-- Just, I'm sorry.
It is pretty significant variance that's being requested. And my concern is that every time you wanna have a new tenant in the building, you're gonna have to come in for a variance now for signage. I mean, I guess, consider leaving some space for tenant signs or working that into your variance proposal.
That's a good comment. Yeah. For other--
In the main section.
Yeah, if you're gonna have more tenants in the main section, and they need more signs, you should plot out some spaces now and increase your variance request, I think.
Yeah, because right now, I've already included transitionals area.
That would add--
Near within that.
Maybe a couple more.
Probably double it, then. But then, the other thing is if we reduce down the number of panels and keep the number, you know, the variance request where it is--
No, I'd say increase the variance request.
Or, or go back to your client and figure it out, how you wanna propose it. Because one of the things the zoning board's gonna look at is whether it's the minimum variance request necessary. And so, you're gonna have to be able to make that case to the zoning board.
Okay.
I guess I'm just, I continue to be perplexed. Because it's not, to me, it doesn't say anything. To me, just let me, just let me say, I-- To me, it looks like an awning. Or, or like if he were to put-- We make, we sometimes make commercial businesses put fake windows and fake doors on to make it look like there's something there. And we don't count those as signage.
So, Ms. Moss's determination can be appealed to the zoning board of appeals.
No, we're just having a discussion here.
I mean, what would be--
I'm not challenging, I'm trying to understand. I have not been part of any of this.
Do you recall she identified that long blue strip as part of the Mavis sign?
That's very different.
Because it's branding.
Yeah, that's branding.
And how is this--
So, if he wanted to put up--
He could install doors on the facade of the--
He could put up 10 doors, but it would cost an arm and a leg to do it.
Doors would, excuse me, doors would require a building permit. Doors therefore would require a site, site plan of fake doors?
Yeah. It would require a site plan review. Right, but that would-- He's not being in a facade.
He's basically, he's, he's taking a, a-- What looks like it might be a door, but it's not, it's a decal. He could just take it, he could make a door and fasten it to the building.
But that would require a site plan review.
But that would be a site plan, but not a variance for a sign. That's why I'm struggling to understand.
Well, that's a door, not a, not a pictorial representation of a door.
You might be able to just make some.
For the purposes of tonight, since it's been a long evening--
Yeah, sorry.
Everyone think about it. Go take, go take a look at the building if you want to. And we have, we all have this application already.
Yeah.
So, take a look at it and envision half-green pull-down decals, or decals of pull-down doors on it. And then, just get back to me with how you want me to write the letter. They still have to refer it to us. We have plenty of time.
Right.
This isn't a rush. So, and by the way, just--
I think it's a cool idea.
If the ZBA wants a sample, they could ask for it, right?
I have another one, at the nail salon, with the hands and the fingernails. Tad considers that signage.
It is, it's advertised--
I think it's analogous.
Right, that makes sense.
This is representing--
Okay, I'll tell you what. Chris and Ann are free to go and argue with Ms. Moss. Tad is blue in the case.
No, no, my, my only point is on Guardian Self-Storage.
Discuss it offline is what I'm trying to say, so we can get out of here this evening.
I mean, if you want, I can have Scott put the other panels back up, the ones that he took down. And so, you can visually see what it looks like. And we can leave them up there for a few weeks.